It's seven o'clock. Everyone get their pictures?
On the dock.
Everyone?
Is Josie coming in, do you know?
No, she is out sick.
She's out sick?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. We'll start on time.
I hate these agendas.
We always start on time. I know we had pictures outside for the full council. So with that, we'll call to order the November 19th, 2019, full city council meeting. The clerk will call the roll and record attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Presnahan?
Here.
Lahey?
President.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
B.C.?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Amen.
The City of Hoyok.
And the city council.
I wrote a note for my students. It reads right on my desk.
So we have two items that were laid on the table. One is the supplemental budget. And the other one is the committee on DGNR who has referred a special permit application. Any action on either? No? Alright, so next would...
If I...
Counselor Murphy?
If possible, I'd like to just bring up item two if possible.
Motion is to take up item two. Sir, a second?
Second.
Are we taking it off the table?
Taking it off the table.
For the purpose of voting on it?
That's what he's asking, yeah.
Well, at least for an informa... I think there's more information that might change the situation.
So hold on. All those in favor? All opposed? Counselor Murphy?
So, I've gotten some communications both from the law department and the building department and in terms of the fines. There was a fine assessed from the Conservation Commission, which, there was a hearing on Friday and there was an agreement, and that fine has been paid, I believe as of today. The fine with the building department is also being... Had been appealed, but now has been agreed to be paid. It's by understanding that it's going to be paid by the first week of December. I do know there are some concerns from both the Conservation Commission and the building department in terms of doing this. But I know my original concern when I did this was that they were going to pay the fines before, and obviously they've done the first one and they've committed to the second one. And it would appear that they're going to still need to go before the Conservation Commission and the building department to upgrade their permits. But with that in mind, and with the idea of resolving the issue for the neighborhood property as well, I know I was the one that kind of started the movement against it. I would be okay and would consider passing that today.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lisi?
Did they already go before the Conservation Commission, or is that something that's coming up?
Counsel Murphy, it's something that's coming up, correct?
Yeah, can I?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, this was from the... From Tasha Marshall from the law department. And I'll just read the second paragraph. They... Mr. DeMarinus recently paid the ticket issued by the Conservation Commission, but it's my understanding that he still has an open ticket with the building department. Another email I got said that was going to be paid in the first week in December. Also, the resolution of the mediation with Mr. DeMarinus included payment of the ticket in addition to one. The defendant, Mr. DeMarinus, preparing a construction sequencing plan to submit the plan to the Conservation Commission on December 1st. So he is going to submit a new plan to the Conservation Commission, which obviously they would have to approve. They would comply with the original order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, and that Mr. DeMarinus and the Conservation Commission will work together to fix the issue of the trees cut down so that the property can come back into compliance with the flood overlay ordinance. Second paragraph is, "Since the removal of the trees in the flood plain... Or the flood overlay is an extremely complex issue and could have damaging effects on the city if not resolved appropriately, the law department, the building department, the Conservation Commission, and the planning department are all working together to find a long-term solution, which we will not know until we have received the construction sequencing plan from Mr. DeMarinus. Unfortunately, since the mediation on Friday lasted until early afternoon, she was unable to send a formal communication to the city council by noon on Friday. And lastly, they have reached out to the state to get additional guidance on how to move forward, and we are currently awaiting their reply." So, building department and conservation compartment... The department all seem to know that they're going to be dealing further with this. They were going to put further restrictions or further requirements on the permit, and our original goal was it to follow the building and the conservation requirements. So it appears that will happen, that he is going to pay all the fines.
Anything further? Counselor Lisi?
I'm just wondering if the meeting that happens with the Conservation Commission moving forward impacts the special permit in any way? And maybe that's a question for legal. So I would motion to second...
Motion would be to suspend the rules to ask legal a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, they're all separate permits. So it depends... I mean, the building department is looking at a set of criteria, Conservation Commission is looking at a set of criteria, and then the city council is going to be looking at their own set of criteria. So they all work independently. So it's determining whether or not you want to allow a special permit based on the other permits that are still outstanding with issues that have not been satisfied yet. I can't tell you how to vote on your own special permit and what criteria that looks like. I know the Conservation Commission is looking for some other additional information. I believe the building department is still looking for additional information. I think there's a lot that's still outstanding on this development.
Can I answer your question, or...?
It answers my question.
So is there a motion on the floor? Is this... Counselor Murphy, you... What would you like?
I'm just... And I brought it up to take the information out there. I know when we originally took it up in DGR, the idea was to follow the... That they would be required to live up to the obligations of the Conservation Commission and their building permit, which obviously they still would be based on what we've done other than maybe changing the dates. And that, you know, they required payment. And I certainly want to make sure that whatever happens, you know, I know some of our conditions from the DGR committee were that they were going to plant arborite... Arboretis from 150 feet or something of that nature, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Bartley, on that property. That's one of our conditions, so...
Counselor Bartley?
Well, go ahead, Counsel Lisi.
No.
I mean, I gave my report last month. Report was a report. I heard from one of the noes. There were four other noes on this. I don't know if you're satisfied, you were one of the noes. Word six counsel was one of the noes. I don't know what research they've done to get into whether they've gotten to yes. I was at yes a month ago. Nothing is... Everything, Counsel Murphy, and I respect him for following up, but that... Nothing has changed since last, other than we have more details. I mean, the letters laid out exactly what was required. Now they've taken action steps to meet the letters. But we put that in the report, in the committee report. It's pretty clear. But the noes were the noes. So I'll make a motion that we approve the committee report and we grant... And we grant the special permit...
Second.
Based on the conditions as exactly written, whatever it was a month ago.
Counselor Lisi?
Thanks. So I'm just going to, you know, the way that I'm reading this is that not much has changed, except for we have one paid ticket. The rules of our own body say that we shouldn't be granting special permits with any municipal fees or fines or taxes that are outstanding. And so, given that the, you know, the fine from the building department hasn't been paid, I feel like that's going against the rules that we have. There was a request to make it an explicit condition last time around to make that the fines and fees were paid as an explicit condition of the special permit moving forward. But I don't think that more questions have been answered. I think actually more questions have arisen because the whole ground is shifting beneath us. If we have new information from a meeting with the Conservation Commission that's going to say there's... I don't know what is going to come out of that. But I would like to see the criteria from Conservation Commission clearly delineated and satisfied, as well as the fines that are still pending in the building department. I'd like to see those paid per our own rules before I'm willing to sign off on this.
Counsel McGivern?
Just on the fines and fees, on any fines and fees, my understanding is it's when someone is in arrears, when someone is overdue. And there was no evidence produced that these fines and fees were overdue. Back taxes, taxes that are, you know, beyond the due date is what we go after. Leans on water department, leans on the gas and electric is what we go after. But if they're not overdue, then that doesn't apply to our rules.
Counsel Sullivan?
Question for legal. Are these... Any of these fines under appeal?
The building one, I don't believe, has actually been heard. They did two separate dates in the courts for them. And we had asked that they be combined, and he actually requested to keep those dates as they were. So one of them, we had an agreement, which is why it was paid. We agreed to lower it to 450. That one was paid, and we have verification of that from the clerk's office. The building department one, I don't believe, has actually been heard yet.
So it is under appeal?
Yes. So it's being appealed to the housing court.
If I can...
So I don't think we should be holding something up that's under appeal.
Counsel Murphy? This will be for its third time, so motion is suspend rules. Sal will speak.
Second.
Yep, second.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I'm just... Again, Tasha Marshall sent this part. Mr. DeMarinus and I came to the agreement that the ticket issued by the building department will be paid the first week of December. So clearly that has been settled, so...
Let's get a motion.
Alright, so the motion was... Was there a motion? Kind of lost me in the shuffle. Counsel Bartley? Did you make a motion, Counsel Bartley?
I did. It was made in a second.
Alright, so motion was to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit with the conditions that were read, which was A, the petitioner shall work with the Conservation Commission; B, that the plant appropriate vegetation to serve as a buffer; C, that the September 13th, 2019, letter of the Conservation Commission shall be complied with by the petitioner; and E is the city ordinance, section 8157, must be complied with. Got that correct? So motion was to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit. The clerk will call the roll. Vote yes, you're voting for it. With the conditions that I read, I pulled the name. Counsel Lisi was pulled first.
Lisi?
Oh.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Lahey?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Eleven yays, one nay.
Your vote, you approve the special permit for item number two.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider action on number one.
There's no action. It's still laid on the table.
It's on the table.
Well, to take it off the table.
To take off the table.
Remove from the table.
Motion is to take item number one off the table. It was seconded.
Counsel McGivern? Is there new information on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought we were going to sometime have a presentation from the mayor and the auditor about what this is.
Yeah, I've received nothing. But motion is removed from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Under discussion. Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, I mean, we've had this on the table for five months now. They haven't brought anything forward on it. Couple of the items were vetted out. I just feel at this point, if there's anything in there that they feel they need in supplemental budget, they can come forward at a later date. Let's get it out of here.
Anyone further? Counsel McGivern?
The problem is, is the supplemental budget can only come forward up until we set the tax rate, which should be within one or two meetings from now. If there's anything in this budget that is part of an appropriation for monies that are being identified that, you know, could be spent, maybe not where they're identified, but somewhere, we need to keep this supplemental budget alive and find out exactly what the appropriation that is behind the supplemental budget is. If we cut it, we're cutting monies that could be very much needed to keep our services going within the fiscal year itself. I would just like the opportunity to talk to the auditor and the mayor before we make a... Take a final action on this.
Counsel Bartley?
Well, I don't... Thank you. I'm going to defer to Counsel McGivern's 40 years of experience, but... Because I have not dealt in my time here, it's only been eight years, with supplemental budgets. But just through the chair to the finance chair, Joe, I would... Is it possible to have a... To have the auditor come into a finance meeting so that we can discuss that in finance, Joe? Between now and when we next meet? I mean, I guess you'd have to do a late file, I suppose, but...
I, you know...
I mean, because I just don't want to...
The only reason it's on the table is it's... We... Budgets have been done by the full council, but I have no problem if it's okay with the president and okay with the majority.
It's okay with you. We can just do a late file. Have her come... Because I think that's what you want to have answered, and that would satisfy Counsel Sullivan's comment, to have her come in and explain to us what's exactly at issue here. Because I don't know what it is, Joe.
Hey, it makes two of us, and that's why I want to...
Three of us.
Before we take an action, I just want to make... Because I've never seen a supplemental budget of this magnitude. It's almost like a rewrite.
So Mr. President, if it's in order, I mean, can we just...
Yeah, whoever's got a form, just file late file. We'll take it up, ship it to finance, and we'll be good.
Okay, I'm just going to get up and have Counsel McGivern do that, okay? Alright, thank you.
Counsel McGivern, you still have something, or?
I'll say.
Anyone further? So motion is to lay on the table, or what would you like to do, Counsel Sullivan?
Should we send it to committee? I mean...
Send it to finance?
We could just send it to committee.
Send it to finance?
Alright, motion is...
We can act on the document itself.
Alright.
Not the final vote, but we'd refer it back to the full council.
Counsel Bartley? We'll just send this to finance, and then we can call in the auditor. That way you have to do a late file. So motion is take one, refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'd just like to thank the chairman of DGR for giving us work.
Full employment opportunity.
It's just my confusion, Joe.
Public comment, there is one. We need a suspension of the rules. It's thrown someone from South Hadley.
Suspend the necessary rules?
Motion to suspend the rules, allow a person from South Hadley to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Name and address. I have Luke at 512 Amherst Road, South Hadley, Mass.
Yeah, Luke Sholter. You gotta turn the mic on there. I apologize. I thought the public comment was going to be before item two, which is what I was here for. So I'm all set. Thank you.
Our apologies.
Communications, item number three.
Oh, just...
The proposal to purchase the...
Receive and refer to DGR, please.
Motion to receive for DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is from the Slaughter memorandum for the police...
Finance?
Union, Local 409. Motion be to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five is from the city clerk and the city council admin for the minutes of October 15th, 2019.
Receive and approve.
Motion is receive and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six is from the auditor for Counsel Bartley's vendor decimation vendor 31032.
That's Mr. Casey. DGR, please.
Motion is to send to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven is an agreement between the city and the ambulance service. Finance?
Finance.
Finance, great.
Motion to send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Suspend the rules, take up eight, nine, and 10.
Ah, sorry. Yeah, just... Can we... Well, that's okay.
You're supposed to separate them?
No, I'll do that.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up eight, nine, and 10 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Bartley?
Just under discussion. What you...
What do you want to discuss before you...
No.
Big action? Okay, motion be to receive the minutes.
Yeah, just under discussion, Mr. President. Just under number nine.
Number nine would be the board of health.
Yeah. I'm just going to take 30 seconds to read... This is... This is in the minutes to the September 5th meeting of the board of health. And this is a discussion relative to a tenant of Holyoke, or One Holyoke CDC. The Almonte Two Market is a commercial tenant of One Holyoke CDC. The owner of the market removed the trash receptacles that were placed in front of his store because they were getting overflowed with human waste and hypodermic needles. And he, the owner, did not know how to address the issue. So I just want to point that out, Mr. President, that we have... We have very conscientious, I think, commercial tenants trying to do the best they can with almost a no-win situation with human waste and hypodermic needles. So the gentleman removed his trash cans, got a fine from the board of health because there was a mess, or a ticket. But the... In the backend, the last letter... Last line is that the vendor had the trash and the litter removed. Now, so in other words, he removed the human waste and the hypodermic needles. I did speak with Mr. Gonkov today, or the other day, and I told him what a great job his commission is doing, and I fully support every effort he makes to remove trash and litter and debris from the city of Holyoke. It's just a really uphill battle, Mr. President, and I just want to commend the owner of Almonte Two Market for doing the best that he can. But we just have these great challenges, Mr. President. So I just want to point that out, because sometimes we just skim over these minutes and we just kind of tuck them away. But I just want to bring that to our attention. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, just one... Mr. Moriarty from One Hoyoke was the one. I know he was working with the Almonte Market, but it was him that came on that Saturday. I mean, he brought pictures that he had what was there when he went to the... After getting the complaint, brought them to the board of health that night. And I know they're trying to work on trying to find a way. It is a problem that just continually causes distress there. But I know Mr. Moriarty took care of it, I believe it was the Saturday of the complaint. So I don't know exactly the date of the complaint, but... And his goal is to try to have the board of health not create a citation right away, but to call the landlord and try to see if we can do it without a citation. I don't think they ended up paying a fine, but that was his concern.
Anyone further? So eight, nine, and 10 are to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions, 11 is a renewal for 267 Southampton Road for a plant-based food business. All taxes are current.
Motion to approve?
Motion is to approve the renewal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then 12 is a petition for a new special permit, so that would go to DGNR.
Motion for the ordinance?
For ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Could we suspend rules and go out of order to 13H, please?
Motion is to suspend rules, go to 13H. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 13H, command ordinance was referred, special permit application for United Tractor School, Inc., to use as a temporary storage unit at section 7.212 of the zoning ordinance at 50 Hoyoke Street. Recommended that adopted with the following conditions, that the storage unit be secured by the property and maintained, and that the storage be pleasing in nature. So...
So the motion is to receive and approve the committee report and adopt... Approve the special permit?
Motion is to receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the folks with the tractor trailer school that we are familiar with, because they came in for the special permit for their previous location, which the property has transferred hands. So they came in because they needed to get a new approval in order to be approved for the new location. For those of you who have gone by there, it's now set further back behind the mall, so it's actually a little less visible to the traffic going in and out of the mall. But they came in and reviewed their situation, their plans, and again, it's really referring pretty much to a relatively small storage unit for sort of ancillary supplies that are related to the school, if we might recall from the original permit application. And so, pretty straightforward, change in location. Nothing else really different. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel Bartley?
Yes, so I support this. I just want to make it clear, because I did hear from counsel today from... For the vendor, our former mayor, former state senator, who is with us now, that the vendor is paying excise taxes for all its vehicles to the city of Holyoke. So that came through a question to me and probably to others as to whether this is or isn't happening. But it was confirmed to me that, through their counsel, that the excise taxes are now coming to the city of Holyoke for United's vehicles. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
Well, on the same lines, first, I think this is a good thing for the mall and a good thing for the city in terms of a business operating within the city. And certainly what they do is put people and produce people into employment themselves. We didn't hear anything from the neighborhood, so that's a good thing, too, that, you know, the neighbors, that it's much closer to the residential part of that area. As much as I think it's a good thing for the mall, and I thank Counsel Bartley on the excise tax, I also pose the question, and I hope the assessors are looking into it, is that there should be an adjustment in property tax on this property because the business is being... Although they don't have laws, they are operating on the land itself. So the assessors are going to check that out, just in the sense of fairness. I'm sure it's a triple IB, so it won't hurt the mall, it'll just hurt, you know, a little bit more from the vendor.
Anyone further?
is that there should be an adjustment in property tax on this property because the business is being, although they don't have laws, they are operating on, on the land itself. So, the assessors are going to check that out, just in a sense of fairness. I'm sure it's a triple IB, so it won't hurt the mall, it'll just hurt, you know, a little bit more from the vendor.
Anyone further? So, motion is to receive, adopt, and grant with the conditions. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit. Anything further, Counselor Vacan?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, if it's possible to suspend the rules and take up out of order item 17B. Is somebody here in the audience for that? People's Bank?
Motion is to go out of order to 17B. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 17B, the command DGNR was referred, a special permit application for People's Bank for a drive-through at 825 Hampton Street. Recommended that it be approved with the following conditions, that the petitioner shall erect a commercial-grade white vinyl fencing.
I didn't know it was going to be, hold on a minute, well, the motion is to receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and under discussion, we'll give Counselor Burley a couple of minutes. Couple hours.
Appreciate your discretion, but I wasn't, I didn't realize we were jumping into it here. What, what do we have, the lawyer here, Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, sir.
We gotta, yeah, we gotta satisfy the lawyer.
Just taking out a lawyer, just.
Those lawyers, you know what I mean, Bartley?
That's one lawyer speaking to another lawyer.
Mr. President, in the meantime, Counselor-elect Libby Hernandez from Ward Four just walked in, and we could invite her into the chambers.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow her to come in.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor? All opposed?
Okay, Mr. President.
Back to 17B.
Yep. Okay, so I've got a, I've got to amend, this is okay, the way petitioner shall erect a commercial-grade white vinyl fence. We also approved the, the hours last night. So, the hours is approved in committee, so I'll make a motion to amend this, to say the hours as approved committee would be, for the ITM, will, will be 8:00 to 7:00 Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays. Otherwise, for the ATM, it'll be the other remaining hours in the day. So, that'll be from Monday through Friday, 7:00, 7:00 PM to 8:00 AM. For Saturdays, it'll be 2:00 PM to midnight, and for Sundays, it'll be all day, 24 hours.
So, item two, or condition two, is that for the regular ATM, Monday to Friday, 7:00 PM, you said?
Yeah, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM, for the ITM.
ITM.
ITM is 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And then 8:00 to 2:00 on Saturday.
8:00 AM to 2:00 PM Saturday.
Nothing on Sunday?
The rest of the time, the, nothing on Sunday. The rest of the time, they, it'll be the, it'll be the ATM for, for the, the remaining hours of the day, for seven days a week.
All right, and that is to add that condition.
Second.
All those in favor? Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
There's more.
And this, and this part of the petition on the amendment, is the petitioner in favor of those hours?
Oh, they, they suggested them, Joe.
Okay, just asking. I, I was, apologize, I was unable to make the meeting. I watched part of it on television, I missed that part.
Exciting TV, isn't it?
No. Commercials is what I'm waiting for.
No, the commercials are my nonsense, Joe. And then one more, Mr. President.
But hold on, on that one, just because everyone's got it. So, based on the number two, which is adding the times, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And there's a third condition?
Yes, third one, Mr. President, and is that we encourage the petitioner to create, and I'm saying it slowly so you can write it, to create an easement off of Pleasant Street that will provide access and egress to the new facility, which is, I'm just going to call it the ITM for, for short. Then I can get into the merits of it in two seconds when you're ready, Mr. President.
All right, so the third condition is to
Courage.
Encourage.
Yeah, access and egress off of, off of Pleasant Street.
Off of Pleasant Street for access
To the, to the site, to the locus.
So, that is the motion, is the second?
Second.
It was seconded, is there a discussion for that? We're all good?
No.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And then I'll just make a motion to grant the, grant the permit as, as amended.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit based on those three conditions.
Yeah, and so, we, we had a good discussion with the, with the engineer, with the attorney, with the, let's see, Mr. Murray, from the Colebrook, and we had also with us the CFO of, of People's last night. So, we had a really good, positive discussion, they, they really heard us out. So, this is going to be located on the north side of Hampton Street. It's just going to be just a bit west of the current site where People's Bank branch has been for a long period of time, and the branch itself is being, is being marketed. So, I, I don't know what's going to happen to, to that, but this, this facility is going to have some, some new, some, some new, a lot, a lot of new green space, there's going to be some plantings, there's going to be some roadway improvements, or, or infrastructure improvements to the, to the sidewalk. They, the various boards, including the city engineer, so Board of Public Works, along with the planning board, approved it. The planning board's only question was the hours, and we, we addressed that with our amendment and our discussion last night. The public works didn't really have anything else to add, they were, they were happy with the way it was all set up. I, I think it's going to be a, there was also some discussion relative to the neighborhood. I, I think, from what I understood, that the, the plan was maybe not to have any presence right there on Hampton Street, but I think the, the residents of that area of Holyoke kind of buy some feedback to, to People's Bank. I mean, they've been in business in Holyoke since the 1850s, I think I'm right on that, but you can correct me, Mr. Driscoll, if I'm wrong. And, and they, the residents of that area have some feedback, you know, it's kind of tough for them to get all the way to, to Yankee People's now, and so it's kind of a long haul. So, so they're going to have a presence there, and it's going to be a 24-hour presence. So, the ITM will be kind of an interactive medium for, for people that will want to have a kind of face-to-face on video screen, and the rest of its time is going to be the ATM. Discussion last night also included pedestrian walk-up. It was, it was kind of hard for us to, to impose that on, as a condition, you know, we, but, but we did hear what the council, what, you know, other council was saying and what the public was saying, that it, it might be tough for people that so used to walking to that old branch, Mr. President, if, if we could find a way to, to encourage People's Bank to consider having a pedestrian-friendly facility. And the CFO spoke to us and said that he did hear that, and, and that he would bring that back to, to his board, and they, they would discuss that. So, clearly, People's is receptive, because from what I understand, as I said, they were going to pull out of there completely, now they're, now they're going to have a presence in, on Hampton Street going forward. And furthermore, I think with encouragement of some of the counselors last night, they're, they might have an additional presence by making it pedestrian-friendly. I think that pretty much covers it. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I think my questions are answered. I, when I asked earlier, I was just making sure that also the fence is agreeable with the petitioner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, he summed it up really good. I, I think it's, it's great for People's Bank to keep their presence there in that neighborhood, and Counselor Murphy and myself brought up the part about the walk-up and possibly, and the CFO did say he would look into possibly doing that, which I think would be excellent if they could, you know, marketing-wise. But I, I think to make that area, you know, where people used to go in the ATM, when they saw the bank, and, and that ATM is taken down, to have a spot where people can drive through in a nice green space, and with the fence there, the, the vinyl fence, I think we talked about, they were going to put like a stockade fence, but we decided to do, one of the abutting neighbors said, see if we can do a white vinyl fence with, with the shrubbery there, and I think it'll look good there, but I'm grateful to People's Bank for that neighborhood up there in the Highlands, to be able to, to keep their presence there for the people that, you know, do utilize the bank and make it a lot easier for them, and I, I think it's going to work well in that neighborhood.
Anyone further? Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, just very quickly, I was here, and I commend Counselor Bartley and the rest of the crew. I don't know what was happening here last night, but it was like 1,000 degrees in here. So, God bless you guys for working through that. But I just want to go on record saying that People's Bank not only does a fantastic job, it's continuing to do a fantastic job, listen to the residents, listen to the concerns, and still having a presence over in the Highlands as well. You know, it's just, one of the things that, we're lucky to have a bank that has probably a billion dollars under management in our backyard here, and, you know, I'm just really happy with what they're doing. Thank you.
There's no further discussion. Motion is receive, adopt with the conditions and the new conditions that were approved. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, just a point of order?
Yeah.
Because it, sometimes it gets, what, can I just address the clerk?
Go ahead.
Madam Clerk, is it possible for you to, once this goes through the process, to email Attorney Driscoll with the conditions typed out?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, so clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the permit with the conditions that were all agreed upon.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve 17B. Anyone further? No? All right, back in order, President's Report, we'll go quick because we have a long agenda here. First, I want to recognize one of our own, Counselor Joe McGivern. Thursday night will be around, what, 6 o'clock, Joe, the Dwight Award. Joe has been selected as the recipient of the Dwight Award, so I want to say congratulations, and if you guys don't have plans, please join us to recognize Counselor McGivern. Congratulations.
It only took him 40 years to get it.
It is? Oh, I just informed that it's also
Thank you.
Counselor Leahy's birthday. He turned 21 today. Happy birthday, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. More importantly, it's Attorney Leahy's birthday as well.
I totally forgot.
And so, wishing her the best birthday.
So, we got to hurry up.
Well, you being here is the first gift.
She's not going to argue with that, I can tell you that. But I also just wanted to throw out there, November 29th, 4:00 to 6:30 here at City Hall, the Christmas tree lighting, there's going to be a lot of fun activities, so bring your families down here for the Christmas tree lighting.
Counselor Lacy?
I just wanted to note that I came from, as you and the clerk did this evening, from a dual-language performance from the Ian White program, it was pre-K, kindergarten, first, second grade, a lot of kids, and the teachers worked really hard to make a really wonderful performance. So, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that went into that. And I also got this flyer, so I'll plug it. The Holyoke High School Theater Company is going to be presenting Clue on stage. Tickets are available through the high school and online, and the show dates are going to be December 13th and the 14th, and there's a evening and matinee performances on the 14th. Opening night is only the evening performance, so support the local theater, theater group at the high school, and go ahead and see it, it should be great.
Counselor Bor Martinez?
Yeah, I just want to announce that also on December 5th, there's going to be a community dinner that has attracted about 500 families in the past at Kelly School, so everyone else is welcome to attend, and hopefully we can support it. Thank you.
And that's December 5th, what time?
5:00. It's sort of like 5:00.
5:00 at Kelly. I know Counselor Valentin called, or texted in, she is not feeling well, that's why she's not here, but we want to welcome the future Ward Four City Counselor. Welcome, congratulations. There's no, nothing further, I said we'll make it quick, I'll just say this to everyone, happy Thanksgiving, both here and at home. I hope everyone has a wonderful break. And to the teachers, as well as all the students, it was a phenomenal show at Ian White. It was, it's amazing how they got all the kids up off and in, and it was just, it's amazing what they do over there, so congratulations to all of them. With that, we'll move on to reports of committee, of which ordinance 13A.
Todd.
Oh, I, I apologize, Mike, I do, let me stop there, I did have to, you gotta throw stuff at me, Mike, I can't see it clearly. Counselor Sullivan did want to make one report from the meeting today.
I will be giving this. Thanks, thanks, Dan. I will be giving this seat up to Counselor Grady when he returns, so I'll be more visible after the first of the year, so. Just to give the council an update, I attended the MSBA meeting in Boston today with Superintendent Zrake, and Aaron Vega was there, the mayor, Alex Morse was there, Devin Sheehan was there In a nutshell, what's going to happen going forward now is the city must file a new statement of interest, and that has to be done between January and April. So, in that respect, the process, should we choose, does begin again, and the, the good, that comes with some kind of good news. Number one is with the new statement of interest, this may result in a better deal based on new funding formulas and changes in the square foot pricing that could be forthcoming in the next several weeks to several months. Under the old, under the policies of the MSBA, we wouldn't have been eligible for any of that. The offset to that is any incremental increases in the cost of the building could potentially offset some of those savings, but in, in the long term, this could be of, of benefit, and, and we have no idea, but it, it is a good thing going forward. The biggest thing I got out of this meeting with the MSBA is that they are absolutely, and this is an exact quote from, from them, "They are committed to moving as quickly as possible, using as much of the current plan and work already completed within the city's financial constraints." So, basically, in a nutshell, what that means is they want to keep us on the top of the list, all right? It's not going to be, as some people feared, another five, eight, 10-year process and get back at the bottom of the list and wait in line. And they will help us clarify this process over the next 30 to 60 days. So, as far as a, what a Plan B may be, they're going to be, the MSBA themselves will be working with the receiver and with Devin and with the mayor's office to help formulate what that plan could be going forward. And they, once again, they've said that would be, within the next 30 to 60 days, they would do that.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sullivan, and thank you for representing us to get that information. We appreciate it.
Well, if you appreciate it that much, it cost me 50 bucks for parking, if there's money in the flower fund at the end of the year.
Get reimbursed, hopefully. That's in the mayor's budget.
And state travel.
And state travel, yeah.
We were told we have money in the budget, but I checked, we don't. Counselor Lacy?
Just, would you mind just reading that quote one more time? So, it's "moving as quickly as possible, but keeping as much of the proposed"
"committed to moving as quickly as possible, using as much of the current plan and work already completed within the city's financial constraints." All right?
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Bartley?
Right, well, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I'm just going to make, since you brought it up here, I'm just going to remind all of us of that vote. So, and the five that went down today are the five that were all in on this. You know, I've lost, in my life, I've lost two elections by one, a whole lot more than I lost, but I never came close to losing with 65% of the vote, Mr. President. That was a fairly devastating defeat for a bad plan. So, that's my quote, and I've had, I already had a discussion with the receiver, I'll have more with the receiver, but when you lose by 65 to 35, you lose six out of seven words outright. I hope that message got sent to Boston today. I doubt it, but that was a fairly devastating defeat. So, my hope is that we can do a lot better than what was previously presented.
I'll just remind the counselor, we're not here to advocate for against. Counselor Sullivan has volunteered for this committee to be assigned to it, and where no one else volunteered for it, has always updated this board with as much information as humanly possible to be very transparent. Where he stood on an issue, that's for him, but when it came to giving this council the information it needed to then provide to the public, that's what he's done, that's what he did today. He's not trying to say he's for or against a project, he's trying to update you as to what just happened in Boston. Just to make it clear. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No, I'm, you know what, I'm just going to take the high road.
With that, that's the end of the President's Report. Now, we're on to 13A. Committee on Ordinance was referred and ordered at the 30 mile per hour signs on BMS be removed and replaced with 25 mile per hour signs. Recommended that be adopted.
And the motion would be to pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion. Counselor Vacan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we were advised by our DPW engineer, Bob Parent, who came down and, as usual, gave a very good presentation on all these items that we'll be covering, that even though we have passed the statutory 25 mile an hour speed limit in the city, in order for it to be able to be enforced by a spot radar, we have to have signs posted, which I did not know. Who knew? Under the statutory rule, they have to be able to observe the speeding for a certain distance, and it's complicated to have any enforcement, so that is why the committee is recommending to the council that we take this action.
Anyone further? Counselor Lacy?
There was a similar order for the neighborhood requesting speed, speed pumps on BMS, but they are expensive to install, and the road is due to be resurfaced in about three years or so, and so, we decided to work with lowering the speed limit and have it radar-enforced to see if that would create some calming, you know, a There was a similar order for the neighborhood requesting speed, speed humps on BMS, but they are expensive to install, and the road is due to be resurfaced in about three years or so, and so we decided to work with lowering the speed limit and have it radar-enforced to see if that would create some calming, you know, effect for the traffic there. And so we'll be monitoring this, and, you know, I think the neighbors that came out are happy with the solution at this point in time, and we'll, we'll see how it works in the neighborhood moving forward.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, very familiar with this area, and I commend them to putting the signs down to 25, there is one sign coming down BMS that says 30, and I've been talking to one of the residents on BMS, he's been trying to get down to 20 for about six years, and bringing it down to 25, I think that's, that's a good thing, and, and trying to get, we, about three or four months ago, we had a sign there, a speed limit sign, the mobile one, the trailer, and that worked out great, actually, you're going down, you don't realize how fast you're going, and you're going 30, 35, and you don't even feel like it, so if they can get that up there again sometime, and I watched the meeting on TV that night, and did see a couple of residents down there from BMS, and I liked the idea about, we had brought that up, I think, before about the, the speed humps, that we were gonna possibly put them in, but if they were gonna do the road over within a couple of years, that we would wait, because I think he said it was about 6,000 per speed bump, and so I think that's a good thing, at least it's a start, and the people in that neighborhood know about what's going on up there.
If I may? And just, so if we do it with, along with the road resurf- resurfacing years from now, and we put the speed humps in at that point in time, they would qualify for Chapter 90 funds, which they wouldn't if we put them in at this, at this present time, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's a really, it's a great value to the city in that way.
There's no further discussion, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the new speed limit sign.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
What your vote, you approve 13A. 13B?
Motion to suspend the rules. Take up B and C as a package, please?
B and...
Will we take up all the traffic ordinances? Well, one is...
Counselor Bacon has the floor.
B and C are straight approvals, so.
Okay, so motion is suspend the rules, take up B and C, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is an ordinance, Thrum Ordinance, that handicap space be placed in front of 29 Belvedere Ave, recommend that be adopted. C is the Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the handicap sign be placed at 256 Walnut Street, recommend that be adopted. Motion is to receive, adopt.
Adopt and approve.
And approve the handicap signs, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
These were straightforward, they were reviewed by our Disabilities Commission, who made a site visit and recommended favorably.
Anything further? You see a roll call, don't they, for the handicap signs?
Yes.
I thought they do. So clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for B and C as a package.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
What your vote, you approve B and C. Counselor Bacon, package more, or?
Package D, E, and G, and they're all amendments to the traffic ordinance.
Well, one requires ordinance language, D requires...
All right, so I'll take up D first, and then we'll go to E and G. So, motion is take up 13D. Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that no parking sign be installed near 970 Hamilton Street, recommend that be adopted. Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
In this one, in order to have it enforceable in, in the ordinance, we want to have a motion to pass the first reading and add it.
All right, motion is to pass the first reading, under discussion, anything further, or?
That's straightforward.
This is from me, so I, I thank everyone for taking this up. You originally said no because of engineering, and then I had the engineer come out to look at the site, and the way it's set up by the driveway, he then said, "Refile it," so I appreciate you guys taking it up in a timely fashion.
It was sort of an unusual situation.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to tell you you did wrong, no. I did follow up with the engineer, and he was, he was very good, so I thanked the committee as well. So, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the no parking sign.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
What your vote, you approve 13D. Take up E and G?
E and F?
Take E and F as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E, Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the city engineer evaluate city line of Rock Valley and Southampton Roads for a four-way stop sign, recommend that the safety improvement options, approve the recommendations of the city engineer. Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the city council amend the Wayne Street Reservoir Study Committee ordinance to permit at-large members of the committee to, to two alternatives, recommend that be, alternate, sorry, recommend that be adopted.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion is to receive, adopt the committee report, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, under 13E relative to the intersection at Rock Valley Road and Southampton Road, our engineer gave a very detailed report, it's a very problematic intersection because there is more traffic coming there, but it's not an aligned intersection between one road and another, so they can't really create a four-way stop, but he did say they could clear more of the brush there, and that they could put in larger stop signs because it is a dangerous intersection, especially with the traffic coming down the hill on Southampton Road and increasing, so he indicated that they could go ahead and put the increased-sized signs with us, just accepting his recommendation. So I appreciate that.
That was 13E, and then 13F.
And 13F was to, an order that was filed to amend the committee, so that there could be two alternates, and that they would substitute in the absence of members, and have voting power when filling in to cover a vacancy, and that the city council would name the alternates. Is, those are two amendments to the original order that I'm putting forth from the committee.
All right, so, hold on, so, permit at-large members named to the committee to alternates.
Mr. President?
One to sub.
So the alternates...
It's in legal form.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's in legal form, so.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, I think we're, we're just approving the, the legal form that's...
Well, correct, but in the original order, we didn't have those amendments.
That's, the chair's absolutely right, but we amended that in committee, and it's been put in legal form now by Law Department, so it's at...
It's there.
2-488.
It's there.
So that's...
But it's essentially as I...
Yeah, so you're fine, we won't have to add it. Counsel, Counselor Bartley?
No, I just want to point out it's in legal form, that's all.
Anything further? So motion is to, so we took E and F as a package, motion is to receive, adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But I have to say, the F is an amendment to our ordinance, so it should, we would need to pass it as an ordinance with a full vote. Roll call vote.
Yeah, you have to take a roll call for that one. So for F...
This is why I don't usually package stuff, but...
But everything that we've, everything that we've done except for E required the, the roll, roll call amendments.
So, for F, which is the at-large alternates, motion is...
Pass the first reading.
Pass the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll for F, if you vote yes, you're voting for it.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Absolutely.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
What your vote, you approved 13F. 13G. Committee on Ordnance was referred, no parking be established and signs installed at Lower Westfield Road from the Elks driveway to Reservoir Gate, recommend that be adopted.
So, motion is to pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass, first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an order that I filed in response to repeated requests from the residents up there who were getting parked into their driveways as the road narrows going down toward the reservoir gate, and they're having trouble getting out and, in and out of their driveways. So, upon discussion in committee, we did amend this order and change it to run from down to the intersection of Richard Eager, and from Whitney to Richard Eager. This leaves the five or six spaces that are between the end of the road and the gate available for people who want to go and park there and walk. So, many people use the parking lot at the Elks, which they don't seem to mind, so this helps the neighbors, but also leaves some space for people to go in and walk near the gate.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I, I will vote for this tonight, but I, I think that we maybe didn't consider, sometimes there's some special events up there, Mr. President, where parking overflows from the Elks, so first of all, the Elks are a private entity, and doesn't necessarily have to allow parking there. So, I'm, I'm not saying that this is something we're gonna do tonight, but it's something that's probably gonna have to be thought about in the future, because when they have that turkey trot race, when, I mean, cars just swarm that whole neighborhood, so it overflows at the Elks, they park up and down Whitney Avenue, and maybe it won't happen this year, but it'll happen down the road, there'll be no parking everywhere up there, and their cars are gonna have to go somewhere, and so somebody's not gonna be, not gonna be happy. So, my hope is that we can consider at some point, in anticipation of these large events, we can consider a, you know, one-day dispensation for, to, you know, leave the no parking for, for those one or two or three events for the year. I mean, it's clear it's not gonna happen tonight, but I just want to say it now, just for, so that we're not surprised when this comes up down the road. Thank you.
Good point. So, Counselor Bacon?
And similarly, I would suggest that perhaps the people that are coordinating those events could set up some sort of a shuttle system, maybe from a easier place to park, and then get the people up to the reservoir. And the Elks have been very welcoming, and I'm not gonna say welcoming, speaking for the Elks, I would only say that they have noted on signage that they're acknowledging that people are there, and they have put up their liability signs, you know, so that they're not liable for the people that are parking there, but they haven't been prohibiting it, at least until now. Thank you.
Counselor McGurran?
The, just to note that this is not the road that goes into the Elks, causes some confusion. This is the reservoir gate, which is at the end of Lower Westfield Road.
Correct.
Which is a good three-quarters of a mile away from the Whitney Avenue Road, which is the road, city road, which the Elks is actually on. I defer to the Ward Alderman in the committee meeting and have no problem with this, but I just hope the residents understand that when you make it no parking, it's not just for special events, or not just for cars that are looking to park there, because they have nowhere else to park, it's 24/7. And if you have family, you know, a party, family visiting, friends visiting, you got your driveway, and that's, that's about it.
It, it is understood.
All right, so we're at motion, pass the second reading, I think it was?
Mm-hmm.
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the no parking.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
13H is already done, what's your vote, you approved, 13H is done, 13I?
I and J, I think we could take as a package.
Motion is suspend rules, take up I and J as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I is refer to the city engineer, research and provide the council recommendation of how to change the ordinance related to downtown parking, so businesses and residents need, needs, meet, needs best met, geez, that's a tough one. Recommend that be complied with, and then J is the Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the city engineer make recommendations to the city council regarding crosswalks from Elmwood Towers across the South Street, also recommend that that be complied with.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report, and I'll defer to the makers of the orders for any...
Motion is to receive, adopt, that they've been complied with, and for 13I, Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. So, there was a period of time where we were getting a lot of requests for permit parking, and there were a lot of conflicts between resident parking and commercial parking needs, business parking needs, and so we were dealing with each situation as a case-by-case basis, and I was wondering if there would be some, something that would help, you know, like a blanket sort of formula that would help us make decisions more effectively, efficiently, or have some criteria to use, and the engineer did a lot of work, the city engineer did a lot of work to explore what other surrounding communities do in terms of resident parking only, or permit parking only, not only in the surrounding area, surrounding communities, but also as far as Boston and Cambridge, and the conclusion that he came to is that it's very rare to have resident-only parking, because you don't want to limit the parking on the street to one sort of, you know, set of vehicles, because they're not going to use the, the parking on the street in the same way that other sorts of vehicles would use it, so it's best not to limit it, but there may be individual cases where you do need to limit it, and that needs to be explored on a case-by-case basis, so while there, there was a thought that we could be doing things, you know, with some more like logic or criteria, it, it really does merit a case-by-case look at what's going on there, who's, who's trying to use the space, who is having issues, and what the solutions can be are going to be very neighborhood, or even block-specific.
Anyone further? J was from Counselor Bartley, I do believe?
Yeah, I was a little bit negligent, and I apologize to the Ordnance Committee and Counselor McGivern, I meant to file an order to follow up on this one, and I, seeing how I had like a baker's dozen on here already, it was getting to be Gordon P. Alexander time, so I, I said I'll hold off, but basically this is to have some space in between crosswalks and where people can park, right now there, there isn't, so you can park legally in places right up to a crosswalk, but we don't have a provision on, on that, so I need to file that order, I don't want to do a late file, so I will file it for the next meeting.
All right, so, motion is that they've been, both been complied with?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
13K, Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that handicap space be placed at at 302 Chestnut Street, Department 2A. Recommend that be given leave to withdraw. There's already one existing there.
Correct. So, when our engineer, so it's motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt, the committee report to give withdrawal under discussion?
So, when our engineer took a look to place, he found that there was already an ordinance on the books, so all that needs to happen is that the sign be replaced. And they will do that.
So, this one's just to give leave withdrawal, and they'll just put a sign?
It's a duplicate, in essence. Thank you.
So, motion is to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Finance. Uh, 14A, committee on finance would refer, nor the finance committee and city council meet to discuss earmarking of marijuana industry host agreements and tax revenues as follows. 20% deposited into stabilization fund, 45% into the capital improvements fund, and 35% into the general fund. Have considered the same, recommend that be adopted. As amended, uh, the new, new percentages would be from 20% to 10% instead of 45% to capital improvement, it would be 55%. Recommend that be, uh, that be adopted as amended and referred to the mayor.
Mr. President, make a motion that we receive the committee report to adopt as amended and refer to the mayor.
Motion is to receive, adopt, as amended, to refer to the mayor in discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it speaks for itself. It's a non-binding, but I think a very strong recommendation to the mayor that we're looking, and I think, I thank Counsel Murphy and other counselors that participated in the discussion and spearheaded it, that we're looking for a plan, a plan of new revenues that are coming into the city and putting them into areas where we know there's, there's a vital need. And I think, you know, if we were to commit percentages, or at least have a mayor on board that would, you know, commit to looking at this, this type of a plan, you know, we could certainly start having a more long-term plan for capital improvements, and a more long-term pan, plan for keeping the stabilization fund healthy and prepared for some tragic, you know, rainy day coming, anytime it comes down the road. So, the committee just adopted with the amendments that we would, uh, we both, uh, take, take the order and to amend it and to refer it to the mayor for his consideration.
Any further discussion? Uh, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank Counsel Sullivan. He made the amendment to add additional money to the capital outlay account, and I'm certainly okay with that. When we first, Counsel Lisi and I, I think we're the two that co-signed the original order. But I think putting more money into capital outlays, or capital planning, makes sense. And I do hope, I do hope the mayor gets the order, reviews the order, and comments back to the city council.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna vote for this order the other night. It was a good meeting, but, um, it was under my understanding that these percentages are just placeholders, that they're not exactly what we're recommending. And that's correct, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, um, uh, so having said that, I did vote on it, and I do think that we should, uh, be, uh, spearheading this into different counts. But as for these actual percentages, uh, I'm not there yet. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern, to you.
Hey, Counsel Leahy makes a good point. I should've said it in the, in my report. Any of these three areas, if the mayor were to put monies into stabilization, capital improvements, would require a final vote by, by whatever city, city council there is.
Yeah, it's just, for anyone who's at home, the percentages as read are recommendations. They're not overall authority. The mayor could come back with a different percentage. We vote something different. This is just to keep the dialogue going. Counselor Aiken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in strong support of this order. I think I was a co-signer, if not, I intended to be. I see it as a companion to the order I filed to set a debt stabilization fund. And we've had a lot of comments about future capital needs, and we've had a lot of discussion about how we've known for a decade or more that we have these needs, and it's time we actually do something, instead of just talking about it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's listed as Counsel Murphy and Bacon. Anyone further? No one further? Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 14B, uh, committee on finance was referred 3,000 from other contracted services to demo supervisor. Motion is that it be recommended for approval, signed off by everyone. Motion would be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Mr. President, the committee met, Mr. Cody was with us. He explained that the, the individual property maintenance demolition supervisor was noted as a deficiency within the salary compared to other members of, of his office. They discussed this, um, both at the level of when this, these two new, there was part of two new positions that were created last year through the, uh, both through negotiations and through the adoption of a salary ordinance. The, uh, the salary ordinance itself, that, that speaks to this, this particular individual as a grade 10. The $3,000 increase would not be the max of that grade 10, but would put the individual more in line with the people who he works with on a daily basis.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so Damian was down here, and he gave a good presentation. And basically, um, you know, Damian knows what his people are doing. His people are working on a different hourly schedule than the department public works. I forget which one. One of them works like a 37.5-hour work week, and the other one works a 40. And so, uh, this individual that Damian's referring to has like a hoister's license and asbestos removal foreman's license, and he has, um, a lot of different credentials that in the private sector would, 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 he would be earning a lot more money. And so, by, um, him, this person, working either less hours or more hours, I forget exactly which way it worked, uh, he's making less money than the person he's supervising. So, this is just going to correct that, some housekeeping.
Counsel Lisi?
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Counsel Aiken?
I just wanted to know what the salary is.
I think it's 51,000.
51.5 to 70.
And it goes up to 70,000.
He's at the lowest grade.
At the lowest grade.
So, it was 51,4, and it'll get him to 50, I think it was 54.
54.
51.5.
Thank you.
Counsel Tom.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to state that, the meeting and how, um, this gentleman, the amount of work he does as far as demo and boarding of buildings, asbestos removal, is very well worth the, uh, the money that he's getting, the increase. And I'm sure we, we also brought up to Mr. Cody about next year, you know, looking at the salary ahead of time. You know, this year, I wasn't too sure what this employee was worth and the value. And I guess the person working under him with the hourly wage was, was making more than he was. So, um, I, I think next year, when he brings forth his budget with the mayor, he can look at that and see the amount of work he's done, and, uh, the amount of money he's saved the city over, over just the past few months that he's been working. So, I, I think it's, uh, it's a well-deserved raise.
Counsel McGivern?
I, Mr. Cody brought up the point of the, of, an issue of retro. The, not the mistake, but the original salary started this, uh, the beginning of this fiscal year. This gives them the flexibility to go back and to correct the salary for the fiscal year.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Calhoun, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $3,000.
Lisi?
Abstain.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Obran Martinez?
Yes.
10As, 1 abstain.
What's your vote? You approve the?
Mr. President?
It's not on. Thank you, guys. I'm not gonna be able to stay the whole, for this whole session, so I look forward to the next meeting. I have to get my little girl, like gymnastics.
Oh, no, no, understandable. Thank you for coming down. 14C is next, and I do believe Counsel McGivern, you want to take up 29 with it?
Make a motion to suspend rules to take up item 29 along with 14C.
Alright, so motion to suspend rules, take up 14C and 29 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 14C is that the committee on finance hereby accept the provisions of the bulletproof vest partnership grant. Recommend that be adopted. And then 29 is, um, an order that, from police reserves, $28,643.52, then go into the personnel equipment for the same amount. Motion would be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. As quickly as possible. This would allow the city to purchase 47 bulletproof vests. We have a, a need where our existing inventory is getting old. Some of them are beyond expiration dates. Some of them are getting very close to their expiration dates. I don't think, we have to explain the, the safety issue of, of our police department having bulletproof vests is very important. They cost about $1,200 apiece. They have to be, each individual has to be, uh, individually, um, I lost it.
Bitted.
Bitted, wow. And, and in doing so, it takes, it's like an eight-week process. So, the, doing something as quickly as possible is what we're asking the full city council to do this evening. The reason I said that is the grant is for $28,643.52. It's 100% match, meaning that they're, they're matching us with what we can spend on bulletproof vests. The total cost would be double the $28,643.52. Therefore, item 29 is, was identified as a source for the city's portion to match the grant itself. Item 29 is coming out of the police department budget. Noted that our auditor was present with the finance committee meeting. Our auditor, after being questioned by several of us, is not at a point where she can tell us the free cash status, although she promised the answer is coming, coming soon. Quite frankly, it's, it's, part of it is because the, the books, the budget hasn't been closed out yet. Melonson and Heath, I'm sorry, Melonson Heath, our outside auditor is working on that very diligently, knowing that that has to take place before we finalize the, this year's, both this year's tax rate, but this, this year's budget itself. We need to know both what free cash is to be able to use it, and we need to know that the, the prior year was, uh, was balanced out. So, we're asking that we, even though it's coming in for the first time this evening, the, the matching part is coming out of the reserves account within the police department budget. I did talk to Sergeant Hart this evening, um, asking if that would leave enough money to get through the year. That account is used on a pay-by-go basis. He said there, there's no guarantee, the forecast, that we may not have more available time for reserves, but at the same hand, it's a good account for this moment in time to get the vest, um, on board over the next two months, in, in my opinion. So, we, we're asking that we both accept the grant. We, even accepting it tonight is dependent upon the match at some point, if not this evening, being also appropriated, so that we can take full advantage of this, of this grant.
Counsel Bartley?
Thank you. I, I want to thank the chairman, again, for doing a great job. There's a lot, a lot on that agenda at the last finance committee meeting. This particular one was a little bit distressful, Mr. President. Seeing how we have a very worthwhile, a very, you know, worthwhile, vital, a vital grant to procure, was it 47 vests, Joe?
Just 47, yeah.
Okay, 47 vests. And, because the other ones are coming to the end of their useful life. And so, at the time, we were advised by Sergeant Hart that it was a 50% match. And I think it was the president's suggestion that we move this out of, out of committee, because we've done this before, and so now we have it before us. Clearly, I think I fully, well, clearly, I, I, I fully support the procurement of bulletproof vests. I'm a little mystified as to why the match on this is coming from a personnel line item as opposed to an equipment line item. We're kinda behind, or I'm kinda behind the eight ball on it. I certainly don't want to vote against this, Mr. President. But at the same time, I have no rhyme or reason, other than what the chairman said. I don't doubt it, but, but it's, it's, to me, it's apples and oranges. I mean, you're, we're, we're procuring equipment, we're, I, I said in the meeting at finance, I suggested strongly that they find the money within the HPD's budget, the 28 and change. And, and so, I didn't think I'd have to say, find it from an equipment line. I didn't think I would say, don't take it from a personnel line. But in fact, that's what they did. And they take it from, you know, the reserves. So, we rely, I, I, we rely, the city, the public relies on the, on the HPD reserves virtually every day of the year, and certainly for events. And this is where they're taking the monies from. So, that's point one. Point two is, as the chairman pointed out, uh, we, we raised the issue. In fact, I have, I filed a couple orders relative to the free cash situation, uh, right now, uh, or in tonight's agenda. I mean, the, the budget, as we saw last year, or coming into this year, at budget time, it's on the edge of a knife. And whether there's gonna be free cash, uh, the auditor, the auditor didn't even want to hazard a guess. This is not her first budget, Mr. President. This is not her first time with free cash. I mean, I think it's her second or third, but it's still, you know, she's not walking the door right away, right now. So, um, I don't know if we have any kind of guarantee. I mean, we don't, we have, well, we have, we have no guarantee that, that the monies we take out of here tonight, transfer out of here, will be, uh, reinserted by the mayor. Because only the mayor can appropriate funds, as, as most of us know. And we have no promises from the mayor that he's gonna do this, Mr. President. So, I just, I'm just saying it on the record, that, that, I, I think this is, um, while this is a noble cause, Mr. President, this is really poor budgeting on behalf of the chief of police and, 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 and running this budget. I think this is a poor job by the chief and, and the mayor. I mean, to take something clearly equipment-related, and take it out of personnel, a personnel line, I, I don't think that's the way, I don't think that's the way to run, run a budget, uh, budget. But it was approved, it had to be approved by the mayor, and approved by the chief of police, and here we are. And so, we're the ones that have to vote on it. I, I think, I mean, I will vote for it tonight, because, because we need it, and we have to get the ball rolling. But, um, I know this is rhetoric, and there's nothing I can, nothing I can do about it other than just express my feelings, but those are my feelings, Mr. President.
Counsel Aiken?
Thank you, Mr. President. My comment was along the same lines as Counsel Bartley's, because I was just reading about how we had to send extra police officers over to the high school. It seems like our demand for boots on the ground is higher than ever. And I do usually make the finance committee meetings, and I'm sorry I didn't make that one, but, um, I see the dilemma. I know the equipment is needed, and so my question was, if the intention was voiced, to move any monies from other part of the budget into the reserves if they're needed, I just, I'm just surprised that it came out of a personnel account. Usually, people are coming in for more time, more hours. So, was there any intention made through the president?
I can answer it. I'll answer it.
Or?
Well, and Counsel Bartley pointed out correctly, I was the one that said you can, can have it come out of committee in order to bring it up tonight and see where the funding would come from, because we knew free cash wasn't certified. Therefore, we wanted to see where it was gonna come from. And Counsel Bartley is correct, we didn't realize it would be coming from here. So, at the meeting, instead of just tabling it, knowing that there is a time constraint, not so much for the grant. The grant has some time to act on, but it really is the vests themselves. They're at, they're, end of their capacity. I think it's a five-year term for the vest. And there's a fitting requirement. You gotta get fitted, it, it takes from eight to, I thought you said like four months. So, it, it was a while to get those vests, knowing that we're at the end of the term. So, although the grant had time to act on, the time in order to get the vests in to make sure people are safe was really the dilemma. Therefore, the committee said, send it out to the group as a whole, see where the funding's gonna come from, because there is no free cash yet. That was the discussion. Now, we learned tonight that it's coming from, from here. And, and I do understand Counsel Bartley's, uh, issue with it. It, you know, at the time, no one knew where it was gonna come from.
Okay.
We are learning tonight.
Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I just met with the chief last week, and he talked about how much he needs to use the reserve officers, so, uh, and that they are a key element. And I know he had a board up there telling me all the reserve officers that were pretty much active, and others that are going to the academy and gonna become active. But I do think, and, and maybe in, in looking at their budget and trying to come up with some money to make sure this got adopted. My concern is that we should never be in a position where we have to be passing something because things are getting dangerous. We, we ought to be anticipating, and if they have a two-year life, a four-year life, or whatever the case might be, we need to be replacing things and having that planned in our regular budget on a regular basis, so that we're never put in this situation again. But I also agree that, and I would, I would tell you, that if they start transferring money into other accounts and they don't, from other departments, that they want to give supplemental money out of free cash, and they aren't putting the money in police reserves, I would not vote for that.
Counsel McGivern?
Just, um, good budgetary discussion. Don't disagree with anything that's been said. But just want to point out, and this is after talking to Sergeant Hart, but also understanding the timing of this. The, there, there is no surplus in the equipment area of the police department budget. Be quite frankly, it's only November. If they had a surplus in that line item, I'd question out why it's a surplus, because we just passed the budget, you know, for July 1st in itself. Those are dollars that they need in their, on that side of their budget. There is no capital outlay dollars, which, we had a great discussion about this. We've had this discussion for years now, in any of our budgets. had this discussion for years now, in any of our budgets. It comes and goes, and we use free cash when we have it, when we have enough of it to, to use it for capital outlay. Our budget is all personnel. So if, if we were to take any other personnel line item, these are positions that are, unless they're vacant, these are positions that need those dollars for twelve months. Reserves are pay-as-you-go. I agree. They, they do a great job for the city, and I agree that, and it's only been in the, probably the past several years, that between the union agreeing and, and city as management agreeing, that reserves are used more and more, both as not just part of their retraining, but, you know, both as part of keeping the, keeping the positions of, of the public safety mandates of the police department manned, you know, throughout the course of any given day. So that, that is why they chose to use this account. There's no guarantee it's going to be replaced, but it's an account that you can take from without, without affecting a twelve-month budget, because again, these particular people are pay-as-you-go.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not arguing with Joe, I agree what he says. But I think with a case like this, when it's, it's vital equipment, I mean, to me, Mr. President, it's almost like when we have to pay the vendors for snow plowing, we, we can take out stabilization. I'm not saying I want to take out a stabilization, but I'd rather have a vote on that transfer than taking it from payroll account for the HPD auxiliary police, on whom we rely on a daily basis. I just think this is a bad idea, the way this is said, the way this presented. I think, Mr. President, if, you know, I'm not going to be mean, but I'm just saying, if we just had more engagement, that would dialogue with the executive part of the government. I mean, I, I didn't get involved with the last debate about, about the, the last order, and, and how hopeful we are that we'll have a plan, but Counselor said, yes, well, why didn't, why, you know, I, I came up with a plan, well, I, you know, I, I, I offered, why don't we have a capital budget? I, I offered that four years ago. I mean, gee whiz, it's, it's not, I mean, we, we've all offered it. We're, we have a dialogue amongst ourselves constantly, every two weeks, and it just, it pings off the wall. It's all, it doesn't, it doesn't go, it doesn't go, the dialogue doesn't leave the room, for whatever reason. I mean, and I don't, and I don't, and I don't hear it coming from that end of the government coming to us either, except on rare occasions. So we're just, you know, we're, we're talking to ourselves, and we're banging our heads against the wall, and our voices are echoing all over this beautiful room. And we're all lucky to be here, but, you know, Mr. President, I, you know, I'll say it this way, I said it fifty times, we're supposed to be stewards. We're nothing but stewards when we're here. That's all we are. We're not heroes, you know, we're not grandstanders, we're just stewards for, for down the road, next generation, next generation. That's all we are. I don't think this is example of good stewardship.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just a thought, just more about transparency for what I hope is a discussion we have later this year, and I hope that the mayor does find money to put back in this account. This account, it's coming from police reserves. What police reserves are paid per hour is horrendous. It's, it's, I think it's like almost that minimum wage right now. And police reserves do everything, although they're not formally sworn in as, they're, they're police officers, they're not full-time police officers or permanent police officers, but they are trained and are police officers, and what they do is the work of a police officer. And we need to adjust the hourly rate for police reserves. But again, it's, they're paid as you go, some police reserves don't want to work until they're permanently hired, some police reserves are actually working in other communities as police officers, waiting for a chance to come onto the HOYOCA role, in, in role itself. So I, I just wanted to bring that up, because I, and this is a discussion we need to take place later this year, but again, because it's pay-as-you-go at this moment in time is the reason that they chose to bring it from this account.
Counselor Bacon?
This is a tangent to this, but why isn't the free cash certified?
That's, we did all receive an email, I do believe everyone was on that email chain about Melanson Heath and the auditor going back and forth on reconciling accounts and getting things ready for filing.
So it's a reconciliation issue?
There's a, there's a few things that we were told by the auditor, but the last email that we did receive, I think it was two days ago, or maybe a day ago, was that they were going forward with the filing, because that's what we were asking, that it, we needed certified ASAP, so.
I'll have to, I'll have to look that up, maybe I missed it.
I'll check my phone tonight.
No, I appreciate it. I don't, I don't usually like, you know, I don't like to make people repeat information we already have.
She sent the whole email chain of her discussion with the outside.
I'll, I'll take another look. Thank you.
Counselor Tom?
No, I'll be brief. I think everybody said something tonight that had made a lot of sense, but we can't deny this, this order with the vests, I mean, for the safety of our officers there, and I, I really concur with Counselor Bartley and Counselor Bacon, that the way this was taken, we didn't know where the money was coming from, but we did ask the police department to try to sign some money in their budget. But I do recall Sergeant Hart talking about possibly getting a grant from the state department, I think, public safety, right, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Tomlin, you're correct.
Possibly we can get this money back through the, another grant, that after we get this money, that through the state, not, it's not a guarantee, but there's possibly to get that money through the, the state department of public safety, through, through the state house. So that's something that's, it's a possibility, and could help out putting this money back into this, this line item.
Yeah, the, for those watching at home, we have to approve it, then have him file for that grant to get the reimbursement for the match, which then is, it would go back to the general account, and we'd have to move it over.
Sounds like the formula for schools.
So there's no protocol when they want to move something from a line item? Should it be being moved from a line item? There's no protocol?
A protocol is to file the order to come here to then...
Right, but before it gets to us here, so that way it doesn't hold us up. Like, so that way we, we know why it's being moved from a line item. In this case, the, the police chief, and I'm assuming the mayor as well, decided to take money from a line item they should not have, technically.
Yeah, the, the line item was funded for the reserves. The real issue was, normally, when these grants come in, we'll look to free cash or somewhere else to then, if there's a match, to pay for it. In essence, give the money from free cash. We don't have that yet, so we have to run somewhere else to try and fill that gap until free cash comes in. We could, if free cash certified, we have extra, we can make an order to file it and put that money back into the reserves, but that'll have to come through the mayor's office. The way this was, because free cash is not certified yet, we have to go out and find it.
From another line item, I get that, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, we should have some form of communication before this lands on our table, from either the chief of police, saying, listen, you're going to see this on tonight's agenda, we're doing it because of A, B, and C. So that way, you know, Counselor Bartley and ourselves, we're not sitting here discussing why, why, why. We, we actually know why, and then we can move forward. It's just to be more proficient.
Correct.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. What is our time limitation on this match for the grant? Is this something we have to do tonight, or if we did, and I say this cringing, but if we did say we want to look to stabilization, particularly if we could take it, do the match, and stipulate any other grants procured would go back into stabilization, do we have time to even consider that or not?
So that's what I was trying to say in the beginning. For the grant itself, we do have time to act on the grant. It's not, it needed answered by tomorrow. The real issue is the vests themselves. They've come to their end of their life expectancy.
Right, so if we don't match, that's holding that up?
If we don't do it tonight, this is what Sergeant Hart says, we don't do it tonight, we table it, by the time we come to the next meeting in December, whether or not there's an order for stabilization, we finally act on that, you are now four more weeks behind, or whatever it is, in order to even get the fitting done. And that's another eight weeks to four months out, depending on the vendor and everything else. So it is a time constraint with the vest itself.
Thanks.
Joe?
It's, it's an eight-week, and I say this because I was measured for my vest eight weeks ago, and it was just available this week itself, it's the same vendor. It's an eight-week turnaround to get measured, to get a bulletproof vest. Counselor Lacy was a little surprised when I said that in committee, because he thought I was getting measured for a vest for city council meetings, and I said, no, it's for my real job, you know? But it's, it's important to be measured, because any opening in a vest, a stray bullet can get through and do, do as much damage as if it hits the vest to protection. So it's something that's very important. Counselor Burgos's question is, this requires a two-thirds vote tonight, because we're taking it up without putting it into committee. We asked to identify some money that could be the match, so we could keep this grant, very important grant going forward. It's unusual that we do it this way. Sergeant Hart did come to the meeting, after I talked to him, I, I said, you know, I would convey everything that he told me, because any transfer, it's not just about where it's going, it's about where it's coming from. Again, only because reserves aren't salary, is pay-as-you-go, is why I'm saying it. We could use more money in the reserve account. Hopefully, there will be more money before the year's done, and we can take full advantage of our police reserves. But right now, it's available through this process without breaking the statute and without breaking our rules.
Yeah, I'm just here, I'm just glad Counselor Lacy wasn't, was...
Did I say Lacy again? He's going to kill me.
Wasn't here to rebut that.
So I, I just would like to hear somebody, what, what, I, I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't just take it from the personnel equipment and then reimburse personnel equipment with the free cash, once it is certified, because I, I wouldn't want to touch stabilization for this. I mean, I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing why it couldn't come out of personnel equipment from the get-go.
Because they didn't have it.
Because we budgeted personnel equipment for stuff that they need, they need that money there. If we take it out of there, they cannot purchase what they need to purchase, whether it's an operational expense, or whether it's something that they need, you know, in order to replace something that is equipment within the budget itself. There's no guarantee there's going to be any free cash. There's no guarantee that the free cash we have, is it going to just be used to offset the budget or pay for other things. We have no way of knowing the, that situation right now. That's why this account, which is pay-as-you-go, is an account that can be used without breaking the rules. I agree with everything that's been said, but at the same time, we can use this.
And, and it goes to Counselor Anderson Burgos's point. We asked this in the committee. Where are you going to find the funds in order to do this, so we can take it up, pass it, because we know the need? They knew where they're coming from to get it, whether it was yesterday, last night, whatever it was, they could have sent us an email or communication at least, so we had something not spent, we spent thirty-five minutes now on this, on something that, you know, they're not even here to address. I know the person was here for a couple minutes before the meeting, but aren't here. So it leaves us on us to do stuff like this one, a simple communication one, it made a lot of sense.
Well, I'll just say, this doesn't look like a city in good financial condition.
So the motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. If there's no for a discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk of Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for fourteen C and agenda item number twenty-nine.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Brandon Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the grant. Fourteen D and E, do you want to take up as a package?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion is to take up D and E as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D is the Edward Brian Memorial Justice Grant. The motion is that the city approve and accept that grant. And then there's E, which is the two thousand nineteen Emergency Management Performance Grant. Recommend that that be adopted as well. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, or a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good, good, good suggestion to take up together, each of these grants, no match. No other transfer, nothing else that we need to do but accept the grant and spend some very much-needed money into our, into our, into our police, I'm sorry, into our police, into our police department, actually, one's police department, one's fire. But still both good, good matches. The item number one, the Burn Memorial Justice, thirty-six thousand thirty-five, it's going to be used to buy equipment this year. It's, it's an ongoing grant that we get some money each year. They pinpointed somewhere between fourteen to twenty-four inflatable shelters that can be used in a number of different situations, special events, emergencies, use, one of, a good example is, on the road race day, they use one of these tents as a triage tent near the end of the race with the, where runners might need assistance in terms of, medical assistance in terms of what's going on, where other participants within the viewing section may also need some medical assistance themselves. They're also going to buy tasers with the, with this grant. I believe this time, it's ten tasers, ten desktop computers, and a printer much, which is much needed in the records department. This is a high-speed printer that will help them with their need for, for records and their need for copying certain items. Both, again, no match, fifteen thousand five hundred for the second grant, and we, we recommend that the city council approve the acceptance of grants and spending of said money.
So motions, receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you vote for D and E as a package.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brandon Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the, two grants. Fourteen F?
G and H, if you would, Mr. President.
Motion is to spend, or take up F, G, and H as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? F is the committee on finance, who's referred in order that the assessor, tax collector, and auditor develop a document and detail the history of tax revenue and growth since the five-year prior to the closing of Mount Tom plant. Recommend be complied with. G is that the finance committee ordered that the tax collector report to the city council to find out exactly, or their best estimate of what the city will be getting in tax revenue from the marijuana industry. Recommend that be complied with. And H is that the committee on finance referred in order that the assessor or tax collector inform the council of how many tax-exempt property exists within the city, and provide us with a list of those businesses slash entities, and provide a report within three weeks. Recommend that's been complied with. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met with both the, the assessor, the economic development planning board director, and our auditor was present for each of these items where we had a discussion in length. A couple of these items have been met, have been taken up in finance earlier. We've had information provided, I asked for administrative assistance to make sure that he gets copies out for everybody. Mr. Marrero did talk at length about the Mount Tom coal plant, gave us a chart of both the history of the, it's not just real estate tax that made that such lucrative property, but the personnel tax we received from the machinery probably made it, made it much more lucrative, and when we lost it, we lost a big chunk of our, our tax base itself. In, in terms of new, new growth, it put a damper on new growth for a number of years, put us close to the ceiling, but we are slowly growing away from that. And I believe as of last year, and, and I believe as of this year, we will see even more, a little bit more light at the top of the ceiling, so to speak. Each of these disinformation, the, Mr. Duloo did talk to at great length about the marijuana industry, and talked about the, the money, it's, it's slow right now, because the, the, some of the manufacturing is up and running, and we're experiencing the, within the manufacturing, we're experiencing some money coming in with the host agreement. I'll remind everybody that there was some discussion at this level, I didn't think we adopted it, so to speak, but important that we did agree with it, that just part of the host agreement would be used in the immediate neighborhoods that are affected by manufacturing and by the industry itself. In terms of retail, where the real money will be coming in at, at some point, and when the retail shops start to open up, we don't have anything open up to date, and we have not seen any dollars coming in. But there, there is the, which I think we all know anyways, the three percent gross income, the, the, both the host agreement, which is universal for every, every permit that goes out there, and I know DGR and ordinance can speak to that much more than I can, but I, I think the, the update is that these orders have been complied with at the time, and, and I think maybe at the, maybe in a six-month or eight-month, maybe down the road, we can take another look at where we are.
Counselor Bacon?
Through the president, did he give a dollar amount?
On the marijuana industry, no. Because there really isn't a dollar amount to give, because nothing is, is up and running in terms of retail.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, one thing, I thought, I thought I'd brought it up, Joe, at the finance meeting, but while retail isn't up and running, manufacturing is up and running. But, and those numbers will be significant, but as I understand it, we won't know, those will come to us on, I guess what we call a cherry sheet around here, and those numbers will come to us from the DOR, and it's sometime into next year before we hear what they are. Just anecdotally, I think I said that right? Anecdotally, yeah. The, the one that is up and running, all right, is turning out some pretty good numbers, and just looking at those, it could, just the one that is up and running could generate anywhere in the neighborhood of between half a million and one million dollars a year The second one, which is the one, True Leaf now, the new one, is moving at a very, very rapid pace in their development of the old former Conklin warehouse down on Bridge Street, North Bridge Street. So they anticipate being up in manufacturing within six months. So there's a, in that respect, it's a lot of positive numbers, but it's nothing we can put a finger on until we hear from, until the numbers are reported, recorded with the state and the DOR.
Correct.
Thanks.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I know, I remember Counsel Sullivan saying that, and I think we had calculated that seven hundred and twenty thousand would be a relatively good estimate on GTI, I think it was. And again, those are the kind of things that we need to be getting that information. We shouldn't have to go out and search to get that information. That information should be coming to us so that we can plan on what we're able to do, what we would like to do, and, and not just go out and spend the money and then find out we don't have the money when we need for our priority needs.
Just for clarity, once again, those, those numbers will not be available to us from the auditor or from the assessor. This is something we have to wait for to come from the state, so.
Any further discussion? So motion is that all three were taken up as packages, that they have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
President, if I can make a, a quick finance committee report on items that were tabled?
Yes.
Just, I think most people that were present and not present, you know, caught it on TV or caught it, you know, in the wind, but there are other orders that we, we acted on with the auditor being present. One, for example, with Counsel Murphy, but other city councils signed on. And we're looking at the long-term financial capital outlay plan being resurrected. The auditor has provided, I believe everybody got a copy of it. And we, we're looking for some more information. We're also, as Counsel Murphy said twice this evening at least, and I think we all agree with them, is we, we need to be more strategic in our budget planning in terms of both the needs and in terms of not just as we go, especially in areas like capital outlay and in areas of revenue coming in. Too often, you know, we, we, we look at the budget and we look at the property tax revenues and we look at, you know, certain local receipts like excise tax, but the, these new dollars and these new items that are coming in, they need to be forecast better. And, and I think that's the point that was made to the assessor, to the auditor, and, with a little bit of help from our planning director and economic development director, that we will get some of these more solid projections long before we go to our next budget cycle, but maybe even before we set the tax rate later sometime in December. But the committee is working on it and we, we just wanted to bring it to your attention that it's not forgotten.
Mr. President, just a point of information. If somebody could forward me, I cannot locate the email relative to free cash from.
I'll get it, I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Please add me too. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that, we are now on to fifteen, Public Safety Committee. I know Counselor Breslin had to take off. He has a very early morning. So with that, who's taking over for?
He's left me some notes here.
All right, so I just want to make sure who I'm calling on, so.
Better step up, Terry.
You want to take up?
Better step up, all right.
They're, they're all complied with, so fifteen A, B, C, and D, you want to take them up as a package, give the report in that they're complied with?
That, that'd be fine, I'll see what I can do.
All those in favor? All opposed? So fifteen A is Committee on Public Safety was referred in order at the committee review of the status of dangerous buildings, provide the city council report of all buildings marked with a red X, including ownership and plans for those buildings in the future, recommend that's been complied with. B is that the Public Safety Committee, to whom is referred in order that the HPD and H, Hoyle Fire Department come to discuss the marijuana industry-related instances in the past six months and whether they see a need for any additional regulations. C is Public Safety was referred in order that the city council have the trees located in city parks examined to ensure that they're still healthy. And then D is that the Public Safety invite in the police department, DPW, to discuss the parking garage issues and cleaning up the areas that's also been complied with. So motion is receive, adopt, that they've been complied with. Our discussion, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, the red X situation, obviously, we're, still have a significant number of red X buildings. There was someone from the fire department here talking about that as well. We're just trying to stay on top of it as much as we can and when we do have the ability to know that we have the authority to take it down, we'll, we'll look at taking some of those down. There's some that we don't have that and, and that's still up in the air. With regard to the second one regarding the marijuana, the, it's a pretty simple note. There's no, so far, the police have reported no problems and no one else has really had any major issues in terms of problems with marijuana use in the city. The third one, in terms of public safety in the parks regarding the trees, trying to find his note on that, but I do know that there has been Emerald Ash Borer, B-O-R-E-R, which is some kind of, is a beetle, and it, and it has been doing some damage to some of our trees in the parks. And we have had about four or five trees that have fallen. They're, they're trying to see, they're trying to keep up with and trying to note the problems before they get to the point where they fall, but that is a concern. And treating the trees is relatively expensive. It could be up to a thousand dollars a tree to treat the tree, to try to prevent it. So again, they're trying to work on that. And obviously, they said Forest Street Department, only one guy, that also creates an issue there. And the last one, in terms of the garage, measures have been implanted to fix that problem. Stairwells have been locked on John Street. Cameras have been installed inside the garage.
The alarm.
An alarm goes to Mike McManus, and, and he also views and called the police department if necessary. The stairwell closest to the children museum has also, has installed a device to prevent loitering in the area. And I think it's a noise device, if I was my mistake. So that's the report.
There's no for, oh, Counsel Tomlin.
No, I want to thank you for those reports, especially the last one about the garages. I know we took a walk over here, this garage over here, the, the Prue Garage a few months back, and it was very, very, looked very bad. And it took a little while to get taken care of and it just seems like we just keep on coming back. So as long as they put some kind of, you know, mechanism in there where it's, you know, somebody's looking after it now and there's alarm or cameras, I think that's, that's a big help. But I, I think that, you know, the DPW, I think, or any other agencies, the sheriff's department, on a regular basis, they can take a look at those areas and try to get them cleaned up because, you know, right across from the children's museum and people are parking over there and they, they see that with the vagrants living there and, and the disgusting condition within that we saw that a few months ago. I, I think that's something that is, is positive, that they're, they're making some inroads on that, that issue.
And I think closing, if I, closing the John Street entrance seems to have, I took a walk in after, after we had our meeting, and yeah, it's a lot cleaner.
Better.
I had gone up and down two of, two of the stairwells, they were pretty well cleaned and, and there were a few cigarette bottles and stuff, but nothing like we've been having. So hopefully, we've come to some kind of proper solution.
Counsel Lacy?
Thanks. I just wanted to note on the same item here that there's actually a high level of coordination between Board of Health, DPW, and police on maintaining the sanitation in the parking garage. And I believe that the police and the DPW both have access to the cameras that are installed there and that, that there, there's been times where, you know, if, if they see somebody on camera, DPW and police just, you know, figure out who's going over there to, you know, clear the way and keep people moving. So that we're not, there, there's, yeah, I, I just wanted to note that there is a high level of coordination between those three departments. And then there's one other thing, oh yeah, the, the red X issue. I just wanted to note that I was, I was under the impression that the red Xs do not necessarily mean that the buildings are condemned, but that they are structurally unsound if there were to be a fire.
That's correct.
So.
However, from what we've heard, many of the red Xs are in fact structurally, from a financial perspective, probably beyond repair. But the red X is for the firefighters so that they know they are not to go into those buildings.
Yep.
And then there's, then there's, there's another.
The one, the one slash.
Yeah, which indicates that there are certain deficiencies in the building, and I'm not exactly recalling exactly what the deficiencies were, but it's a lesser threat than the red X. But obviously, the concern is firefighters going in, they need to know, you know, they're.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't go in if they saw the X, right? They could, they have to manage the fire from outside.
Slash, they'd be more concerned, but they would go in, from what I understand.
Mm-hmm.
But again, most of the buildings, from what I understand, have major deficiencies. There are a few landlords, if I understand correctly, that are just choosing not to do anything in the building and have red Xs, but for whatever reason, continue to pay the fine for the.
Write-off.
Empty building.
The blighted.
Blighted property fine and just allow their buildings to continue to stay there and not, the only thing I can think of, somehow they get a tax write-off for that.
All right, so these are that they're complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventeen A, we're on to DG and R. There was no public service. Committee on DG and R, to whom was referred a special permit application for sixty-four Clemente Street for an auto repair. Recommend that be approved. Conditions are, business shall operate from eight AM to seven PM throughout the week. Cars admitted to the facility repair shall be garaged overnight.
Motion to receive the committee report.
Motion is to receive.
Second.
Under discussion.
I'm going to make a motion to, just make a couple of technical corrections to this. So the first condition, oh, we can combine it. The first condition would be the business is going to be operated Monday through Saturday from nine AM to six PM. That's my motion.
So Monday to Saturday?
Monday to Saturday, nine to six.
Nine AM to six AM.
That's my motion.
So just for, a motion is to amend one.
Yeah.
From eight AM to seven PM throughout the week. Two, nine AM to six PM, Monday to Saturday.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. The second one is cars admitted to facilities, yeah, that's, that's fine. So, you know, I'll, you know, the, the intent is all repair vehicles will be garaged, and I think that's, that says it, you know, probably a little more artful than what I would have written. And so now the motion is to adopt the committee report and grant the special permits for auto repair and auto sales as, as amended.
Second.
So motion is receive, adopt, grant the permit with the amendment and the other condition, our discussion?
Yeah, we had, really, I, it's Mr. Ramos, but I didn't write his name and my first name in my notes.
Ishmael.
Ishmael. Ishmael. And Ms. Cruz were here as well. And just through the President to the administrative assistant, did you send her that email? Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I won't pick on the planning board again. So, yeah, they're really wonderful people. The, the committee asked some really great questions and the applicant and his assistant, Ms. Cruz, I mean, sound like they're enthusiastic about starting their own business and, and the location. It's been, Counsel Murphy was there. It's, it's been a auto repair, auto sales kind of ongoing. The, the neighbors are, the neighbors are good to go with it, the, the landlord's good to go with it. The, the thing about the, the two letters that were, that the planning board issued were not presented, Mr. President, to the, to the applicant. So I, I couldn't believe it. So I had the, had the administrative assistant, who was good enough to get on point. So we got her email and we sent her the, the letters on the planning board with the various conditions to which they need to adhere. Second of all, I said last night in committee, I'm dumbfounded, and I don't know why this came to me now, and I don't know why no one's ever made this order, but it, it boggles my mind that with such a high Spanish-speaking population, that we only write these technical letters that, I'm telling you, Mr. President, an English major would have trouble understanding some of the language. Why, why we don't write these technical letters to, especially to the Spanish-speaking applicants? There's primarily Spanish. Why don't we write them in Spanish? So I'm going to amend what I just said. I am going to pick on the planning board for two seconds. So, so, Mr. President, so, I mean, I don't know if we, I don't want to be, I don't want to start filing orders that overwhelms them, that overwhelms department heads, that's unreasonable. But it should be the position of the city, especially the department heads that have Spanish-speaking staff at their disposal forty hours a week, to at least have technical letters, especially to, you know, Mr. Ramos, I mean, he did a great job. Don't get me wrong.
He did.
I mean, he speaks English much better than I could ever possibly speak Spanish, so there you go. But the fact is, that is not easy to understand, especially when, when you're pinpointing, you know, multi-syllabic words and all the rest of that and throwing that in there. I mean, it's tough. It's tough in English. And if you want to really grasp the laws, well, we ought to encourage our department heads, and our mayor ought to be encouraging department heads, to put these technical letters in a form and a language that the applicant, especially the Spanish-speaking, can understand. So I'm hopeful, Mr. President, that, that your next committee report, your next president's report, that possibly you can come back with some feedback after you discuss this with the mayor or, or department heads, of which you are one, to sort of, to tell us exactly what the feedback is from department heads, how we can, how we can better communicate the intent of, of city officials to our applicants. I, I just think that's vital. I think it's beyond an order. I just, I don't think that's reasonable, but I think that should be really every department head's goal. That being said, we were really, I was really impressed. I think the committee was very impressed by, by this applicant, really seemed gung-ho. All the other criteria were, were good to go. You know, the formative, the parking lot, the, the butters, the, the, the lighting, the signage, the disposal, all, all the rest of that, the waste containers, all that was good to go. So we were, we were happy about that and, and we supported the petition unanimously. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I, I think Counsel Bartley's idea is a great idea. I know Ishmael Ramos last night, you know, he's, he's enthusiastic about what he's doing. He did have a little comprehension issue in terms of trying to get a full understanding and Ms. Cruz was very good to help him through. But I think had he had the information in Spanish, he would have come much more comfortable with us. And I think that's an excellent idea. And obviously, in my ward, there are many Spanish-speaking people who would, if they applied to come to City Hall or if they apply for something, that would be, and I'm just saying, make, just make it an option available. And we can have this report come to you in English or come to you in Spanish, which would you prefer? And that would allow that person to come. And again, I would also say this, I've driven by there three or four times since I've seen the application come in and, and it has been cleaned up. He's, he's definitely wanting to do this the right way and he's very, he's, he's had his hours so he wouldn't create early morning noise for the neighbors and not working late at night, so he won't create problems. And I also talked to him about kind of overlooking Susie Park so that we can make sure the kids are also having a good, good playground. So I, I do think Counsel Bartley's idea is a great idea, and I would just encourage the city to do it.
Well, Mr. President, just so I, not only is that to put in Spanish, as Counsel Murphy said, I agree with, they never had the information at all.
Yeah, right.
They weren't even copied on the letters. So these, these, I mean, here they are before us, what? I mean, and, and looking, you have, you have the letters there, they're not CC'd on it. And I asked Ms. Cruz and Mr., no, you know, I mean, hello? So, so that would have been, so A, they didn't have the information, but I think with the large, that, that's the larger point, but just as important to put it in the, in the proper language. So if it's, if it's, you know, Bill and Mary Jones, all right, well, more than likely that, you know, English at first leg, but if it's Mr. Ramos and Ms. Cruz, could we consider it, Mr. President? Thank you.
Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. I, I concur with my, my colleagues on the, on the board. I mean, they were ready to, to work on it. He took that, that building and really cleaned it up. He took that, that building and really cleaned it up. I, I went by there again today and, uh, to, to see it. And I'm familiar with the area, the block and the, the houses near there, and stating, you know, here's another person in this city that's willing to, you know, invest time and, and, and wanted to do well. And he even stated, he was so honest with us, saying, I, I'm not that great a mechanic, but I'm willing to learn. Got a mechanic and I wanna sell some cars. I wanna sell cars and I wanna be honest with people. I mean, that really, really hit me when he said he wanted to be honest and tell people the truth. You know, you hear this, all these stories about car dealers and how they're trying to get you to buy something with a car with some problems. But I, I agree with the, uh, the, uh, having, if, if it's possible to do the, the letter in Spanish too. I mean, even have the letter. So, to having a letter in Spanish, um, I, I think that would be a great thing if it's doable with the department heads. I'd be happy to talk to the mayor, myself. As a person that's married to a Puerto Rican woman for thirty-four years, uh, I'm very, you know, cognizant of the Puerto Rican people and, and the Latina people, and I think would be helpful. And you might get more people in here looking to invest time, and if they made it a little bit easier for them when they're coming forward to, uh, to really work within, with the different city departments. So, I, I am all for that. I'm, I'm willing to talk to any department head or the mayor to try to get that, that forward.
Counsel Ram Martinez?
This is a great topic. Um, as you all know, I filed my order, hopefully, to begin a process where we can begin even to video or, uh, air our, our stuff in Spanish. Um, it has been a concern, um, of the constituents, and thank you to those who have been concerned about this issue because, yeah, we, we wonder at times, you know, with a population that we have and why they're not involved. Many times, they're struggling with a language that is not there. So, thank you for considering that.
Anyone further? So, the motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit with conditions as amended. Clerk, call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Permits.
Permits.
Thank you.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve the special permits. Okay, so seventeen C, committee on DGNR was referred in order that the Board of Water Commissioners, the manager appear before the city council to consider contracting with independent counsel, consultant firms to repair a feasibility best use study for the future use of the, uh, Whiting Street Reservoir as both an active water source as emergency backup source. Said study should be completed and submitted back to the council within six months. Consider the same recommended that be complied with.
Motion to receive, uh, adopt the committee report.
To receive and adopt the committee report, as complied with, under discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, Mr. President. Yeah, this, this is a, a good order, but I, the, the order, uh, the maker of the order was also the maker, uh, primarily the maker, uh, ninety-eight percent of it, the maker of the Whiting Street Reservoir Committee, and that now being in place. And, uh, uh, the maker of the order felt this is good to go. Also, I just wanna personally thank the ordinance chair for taking up in such a timely fashion, Order thirteen F tonight, because that, that was only late filed at the last meeting. And the ordinance chair was kind enough to take that up so quickly, and that's relative to, related to this, uh, this committee. And the reason we filed that, and again, Mike and I filed that together as a late file, and the reason we did that is because, again, I have to thank Counsel, Counsel Lahey, Lacy, uh, for, for, for running a darn good committee meeting, and, uh, and really, 'cause, and because of his innovation, I think, we really heard from five really good candidates. So, based upon that, Mike and I filed this order, there, that, whatever that was, thirteen F, whatever number was. So, that being said, it was, uh, Mike's, this is Mike's order, and it's his recommendation that, uh, that, uh, that's been complied with, and, and the committee agreed.
Counsel? If there's no further discussion, it's, it's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no charter rolls, no joint school and city council, so it's motions, orders.
Um, actually, there was a joint city committee on the twenty-fifth, I believe it was, right?
Yep.
And, yeah, we had a meeting. Is that possible for us to report? It's not showing here, but we had a joint committee.
We had a general discussion, but I don't think an order from the council was discussed.
No, it wasn't. It was my order.
Yeah, it was.
So, uh, so I know currently the way the system works is it's on their side. They hold the meetings. They're supposed to report back to us. Next year, it flips over that. We'll take control of the meetings and be able to file stuff. So, they haven't referred anything back to us to be filed. It's probably 'cause they don't know. So, motion would be to take it out of committee. Do you have it? Do you have the order?
Do you, do you, we don't have the order, but it was filed and it was taken, it was complied with. I, I don't know what.
Counsel McGivern?
Mr. President, I, I realize the other side, this side and that side, but none of us were even notified there was a meeting taking place, which is another problem, you know, to be able to attend these meetings. I don't believe it was televised, you know, and I, I, this has been going on, and, and it's, we can be guilty on our side sometimes, no offense, Ryan, but on the other side, we don't get any notification whatsoever. And, and I'm beginning to wonder if a joint committee is, is actually working, if we cannot participate in it.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I mean, I would, would agree with that comment, 'cause I, it was an order that I filed to talk about what I think is excessive absence and, and overall, and, and then also chronic absence, which is still over twenty percent of our students don't show up, more than eighteen, ten percent of the school year. So, that was what the discussion was. But I agree with what Counsel McGivern also said, because originally I was called, I think on a Friday, to say, can you make it on a Monday? And I said, well, I haven't gotten the announcement on that, so.
Do we know if it was posted to be in compliance with the open mean law, Counsel Ashenberg?
The, the meeting was taped. It wasn't videotaped. It was taped, though.
Not taped. I'm looking for, was it posted?
No, there was no posting, not to my knowledge.
Well, Mr. President, I suggest we don't receive a committee report.
So.
If I can, yeah.
So, Counsel Murphy?
It was posted on the city's website. I don't know if there was posted. I know it was on the city's website.
That's all you need, though.
That's all you need.
Uh, I don't know exactly when it went on, because originally, when I, no, the first meeting, and he asked me, well, I, I didn't even, and I already had a, I think we had a finance committee meeting that same night, and I said, well, can you do it another night? But I don't, but I don't think the city council gets any notification of it.
Yeah, the, the confusion is, and when this committee was established, um, one year they would, the city council would run it, the, who has ever been assigned, and, and the chair here is Counsel Ram Martinez. She would do all the postings and gather the, the school committee members to have the meetings here. Now, flip to another year, they're supposed to be doing that. Obviously, that's, the back and forth has lost some of its stuff. So, not knowing if it's in compliance with open mean law and everything else, I'd say, let's follow up with it so that we don't violate our rules here. And I will contact, uh, Devin Sheehan to try and figure out where the, the missing piece is. Okay?
Okay.
No problem.
Alright. So, we can, what we can do is make sure it's on the next agenda, so that way it's, if everything was complied with, put it on for the next agenda to take it up. Okay?
I think that's what they did, right? That was your mo, that was the motion, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So, there's nothing to take up as of right now. So, motions, orders, and resolutions. Twenty is from Counsel Breslin, order that the tax collector provide the city council with the top hundred property owners, uh, delinquent and are not current with the city tax bills. Please provide and refer to the tax collector. Motion is receive, adopt, send a tax collector in order to get the full report back in thirty days to the full city council.
Dan has to receive and send to finance.
We want the finance? Okay. So, Dan wanted to receive and send a finance with a copy to the tax collector. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Send a finance. Twenty-one is from Counsel Breslin, that the director of Veteran Services come before the city council discuss the tax workoff program. The requirements, eligibility requirements, advertising, uh, availability slot, the slots are available. Ensure that veterans, uh, owners are aware of this program. Perhaps more public advertisement, um, would be, so I'd say motions, receive, uh, uh, receive and send it to public service?
Public service.
Public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two is from Counsel Leahy, order that the Department of Public Works install large signs that say eighteen-wheeler trucks cannot make, uh, make it under this bridge on Main Street and Lemon Street.
Motion should be adopted and referred to.
Motion is receive, adopt, send a DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, twenty-three is from Counsel Ram Martinez, order that, uh, that in order to allow development and redevelopment of properties in areas in alignment of existing city plan, provide cohesive, uh, to the area and bring those parcels further into conformity. The following parcel should be zoned and changed as follows, and there's a, a list of them. This would be to ordinance. So, motion is to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Sullivan?
Could we go back to twenty-two for a minute?
Twenty-two was the sign for Counsel Leahy, motion is to reconsider.
Reconsider.
All those in favor? All opposed? Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, just a minor, uh, change here. It's not just eighteen-wheeler trucks that can go under, that can't fit under there. It's a, it's a height restriction.
Right, yeah.
So, that would include, uh, box trucks, which can only have ten wheels, uh, other, other vehicles.
So, order that the DPW install height requirement signs at the bridge?
Extremely large, higher requirement signs.
Extremely, I mean, there's already height ones there, but.
They want bigger signs.
Right, right now, the score is at bridge, uh, five hundred wins and truck zero. So, you know.
Is that all?
Yeah.
So, do you want to amend it, or what, what do you want to do?
Yeah, just extremely large signs that.
Alright, so amended to say install extremely large signs regarding the height.
Regarding the height.
Regarding height requirement. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, Counsel?
I, although I hate them, I think we should consider digital signs.
Oh, wow, that's.
I like that, yeah.
We, we had a one-year battle about the digital sign over at South Street. Is that looking at all?
Well, they're popping up everywhere, and if they're okay for schools, they're okay to save a truck or two.
So, twenty-two to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to twenty-four from Counsel Ram Martinez, order that the Heritage Street between Dwight Street and Appleton Street be changed to one-way only. So, ordinance?
Then it has to go to DPW.
DPW?
I think first, and then they send it to us.
So, receive, refer to DPW with a copy to ordinance, or?
I think so.
I think it's.
Just under discussion.
Yeah, Counsel.
Just to the chair, to the maker. Where's this coming from?
Actually, the, the, I was just gonna say, the engineer was the one who called up to, to request this and see if I could file it in regards to.
Okay, I saw, I appreciate that. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you.
Counsel Lisi and then Counsel McGivern?
Yeah, so I think it does go to ordinance.
What we'll do is we'll.
Copy to the engineer.
We'll send it to both. To ordinance and DPW, and that way they'll find the proper procedure. All those in favor?
A request, Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this is, could have a major impact on the flow of traffic downtown. And I would just ask the chair or, or our administrative assistant with the chair to, to make sure we include all the players in this, uh, both the, where I work, the courthouse, but also for jury people who come in from out of town, for people who use the parking decks who work downtown. The, the flow of traffic is dependent upon the one-way streets down here. Heritage Street being a two-way street, and it's one of the whitest streets downtown. I, I'm watching as they're doing the construction, and what I think they're trying to do is to eliminate a lane, which makes no sense, because this is a street that, that helps keep some very dangerous intersections here open from clogged-up traffic, you know, by being able to leave a parking deck and get to a, to a certain street that brings you uptown or brings you downtown. And, and I think there's, there's a lot of players that need to be notified, uh, both, not just on Heritage Street, but on Dwight Street and on the, um, um.
Appleton?
Appleton, but where, where's the, uh, uh, Welfare Department in the, uh?
Front Street?
Front Street, yeah. There's a lot of people that work there, that park in the parking decks. And I think it's, it's something that's, uh, I'm sure the engineers got good reason, but I think we should get people involved in this, including people who have their offices on High Street.
Alright, so we'll make sure we notify all appropriate parties. Uh, so that went to ordinance and DPW. Twenty-five, um, and twenty-six, motion would be to take up as a package.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
So moved.
Under discussion. Counsel McGivern?
Uh, this is the on, not the ongoing, but the, uh, both, each, each agenda, we're gonna see something for this. This is just a transfer of money from a salary line item into an injured-on-duty line item. It doesn't change the salary, doesn't change anything. It just is an accounting purpose, so we know that during this given point in time, X amount of man-hours were off because of injured-on-duty.
Yep. So, it's moving from one to the other to pay. This is both police and fire standard, um, for police, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, and another week, one, two, three, four, five, six, and another week. Fire, one, two, and then two on another week. So, those are the numbers. Motion would be pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk, call the roll. If you vote yes, you vote to approve twenty-five and twenty-six.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve twenty-five and twenty-six.
Does we take twenty-seven, twenty-eight together to, uh, refer to committee on finance?
Motion is to take twenty-seven, twenty-eight as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-seven is the Energy Technology Assistant Program Grant, and twenty-eight is a twenty-twenty Planning Assistant Grant, all to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-nine was done. Thirty, Counsel Murphy, uh, order that the mayor, law department, and the police department.
Make a motion to refer to Public Safety Committee?
Motion is refer to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one, order that Director of Housing Authority and the Superintendent of DPW appear before DGNR committee to discuss plans to improve snow removal in alleyways, so on and so forth.
Make a motion to refer to DGNR committee, but if I could make one comment?
Motion is to refer to DGNR. Discussion, Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I mean, they built the Churchill Homes and they put, they, they gave, to keep people off the street, some of the driveways are in the alleys, and the way the plowing is getting done right now, plows it so that they can't get their gate open to drive out of their, out of their, uh, their driveway, so. And I think it would just be a matter of changing directions. I've had a few people complain. I kind of figured out, there's maybe two or three areas that would, would be affected. But, I mean, I know the goal is to keep people off the street, and that's admirable, but it, then, then you can't block people so they can't get out. So, uh, I, I'm hoping they can figure this out and, and work it out so that once we have a snowstorm, hopefully not in the near future, uh, that they can take care of that.
Alright, so it's DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two is at the Director of Health Department, the mayor coordinate with the CPR training for all city department heads and as many employees as possible within the next thirty days.
Make a motion that it be adopted and refer to the personnel director and, and the mayor.
Refer to Health Director and the mayor.
And, and the Director of Health.
And Director of Health. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Did you say Personnel Director?
Yep.
I think you, I think President might have missed that. Did you get the Personnel?
Personnel Director, uh.
City Council.
Director of Health and Mayor.
Yep.
Okay.
We, we should have that.
And if I can just make one, again.
Counsel Murphy?
This is another case where we need to get better communication, 'cause it's my understanding that we've had the AEDs in, and we're, we're not putting them out, or we're not making them available because we're not providing training that, for CPR and other things. And, uh, I know the Board of Health was saying, well, we gotta get that done. And I just happened to be there for another matter, and they said, you know, if we can file and we could have the CPR training right away, and then we could have an AED in the City Hall and the City Hall Annex, and having the people here trained to be able to deal with it. So, you know, it seems like something that should have been done, but, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that they really move this and get this done, so we, we use the equipment that we have.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel.
This is a really good order. I mean, especially in light, I think, most of us know about our tax collector's father. He should be dead, um, you know, but for somebody being right there a month ago, down at Yale College, um, you know, new, new CPR, and fortunately, there was a, um, a state police officer on the bus trip, and then out of nowhere, there was a doctor from Holyoke, Mass, now lives in Maryland, just happened to, just happened to be on the bus trip. Otherwise, if they're, if they're not there, tending to, uh, to tax collector's father, I think we'd have a different story. So, it's a good order.
Counsel Ram Martinez?
Yeah, thank you for that order. I also wonder if this should be a requirement to all the other departments, such as also the school, um, um, staffing. Um, there was an incident of someone who actually died, um, a cafeteria person, and I don't know that it's, you know, that should be also as an amendment to do them.
Right.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem with adding, and in fact, one of the things I asked is how expensive are these things? And, and should we have one at the DPW department? Should we have one at the Water Department? And, and obviously, the schools would be another, and, gosh, and I, I don't know where the, and they did indicate that that could be something that we could do, but for right, right now, I wanna make sure that we get the two that we do have.
Oh, okay.
And that we provide the training so that at least we have City Hall and City Hall Annex. And, and I also, there was some concern about, we, we should, there was concern about having employees having to stay after to get the training, and to me, this is something that's essential. And, and I also, there was some concern about we, we should, there was concern about having employees having to stay after to get the training. And to me, this is something that's essential. Let's get, if we have to do two hours of the work shift and we can split it up and have two or three different training sessions, then everybody in city hall could be, could be trained.
Yeah, so with this one, councillor, we can file a separate order too.
I was just gonna say, file a separate order, thank you.
All right, so next is thirty-three.
Uh, make a motion to refer to the ordinance committee.
So order from councillor Murphy at the sitter, councillor Murphy, that the city consider establishing a policy provided handicap parking spots during winter reverse parking. So where you want it again?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-four is at the, from councillor Murphy, order that the DG and R committee meet with the appropriate city departments to review the events leading up to the problems at sixty-two, sixty-four Commercial Street.
Yeah, let me, if, if I can, I'm gonna make a motion to refer to DGR, uh, and then if I can.
Motion is to go to DG and R, discussion?
Yeah, first of all, I wanna thank Crystal Barnes, our city solicitor. I have heard outstanding, um, comments from people that have been impacted, uh, and people that were trying to coordinate getting proper services. And also, I know what she's done in terms of law, um, the courts and all of that, and I just wanna commend her for what she's done. Uh, I'm sure there's times I don't commend her, but today I wanna make sure I commend her. You've done a great job, Crystal, and I thank you. Uh, I've also, I mean, this is a case, though, that should never have happened. And the, the gas and electric department condemned the boilers in January. Uh, and I just got an email from, from Jim in the Vell today telling me, giving me the whole scenario and I don't know what we can do with landlords that basically abuse their right to have a tenant relationship. Uh, it appears that they hired someone to just do an upgrade when the, when the boilers were condemned. They came in and they overrode the gas and electric without getting any authority. They went in there and obviously they didn't do a good job. Uh, and they, to me, they're risking the safety of their tenants. And I don't know, and this is one of the things I'd like to discuss when we get into committee and, and I'm certainly, I'll be asking Crystal questions about this, but I don't know what, what we can do, but that should be a situation where, uh, that person loses their right to own their property. And I'm sure that's going way beyond what our authority is, but I'm a, I like to dream of the positive. And then, and then the other thing, and this is, I, I think we need to have a, a clearer, I mean, there were sixteen families that were, could have been moved potentially. And I think three or four were, were going to the War Memorial Building thinking that's where they were to be go for, to be kept over for the night. And then it's my understanding that in some cases, they actually were told that that won't be open because there's not enough people coming to the prom. So, I mean, I think we need to go over the whole scenario, walk through it and, again, hopefully we never have this scenario again. Um, and hopefully we don't have landlords that do these kinda things.
So motion is to go to DG and R, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five from councillor Bacon, order that the city auditor provide documentation of the refund of the nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollar Christmas tree purchased in two thousand seventeen, um, and paid out by DPW Park and Rec. We did get a communication on this?
Yes.
So do you want to send it to finance or what would you like to do?
Um, today we did receive a communication. I, I asked her just to file it through the city clerk so that we'll have a record of it.
Okay.
And one of the purposes for me to file this order was, I realize that it's two years in the past so that the money has to go into the general fund, but I wanna just put it out there that I would urge, to the extent that cash is available, that it should go back to the departments it came out of. I mean, there is such a long list in DPW of curbs, potholes, lines to be painted and they're short in their budget and I'm sure parks, while I might not have the same level of detail, is in the same situation. And each of those departments paid out that cash two years ago. So I would like to see them made whole with the reimbursement, but I know it's not in our purview, but.
So with this order, do you just wanna send it to committee or?
Um, I just would like it receive and adopt, and then I've asked the auditor to just send that paperwork through the clerk.
So motion is receive, adopt, send to auditor of what she's going to file with us for the next committee.
She'll just, it'll just come through as a communication.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six from councillor Bacon, the legal department provide a copy of a letter to the owner of the group home at three-three-three Rock Valley Road, informing them they must have a special permit for a front driveway.
Yes, um, I would like documentation on this because we hold other residents to this standard and that group home needs to comply with our ordinances.
So motion is, councillor McGivern?
We just have copies through the building, uh, department and to the, uh, DPW commission?
So motion is to send copies to DPW and?
Right, so my under, the fact of the matter is, the driveway's there, the curb cuts were approved, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I've gone back and forth with the department saying the owner needed to come to city council for approval on the front driveway. We've been around and around on this. I'm the one that filed the order to change that ordinance and the council didn't want it changed. So if we have it in the law, everybody needs to comply with it, I'm sorry.
Councillor McGivern?
Yeah, this is the, uh, the Ray Fair order itself, which goes back twenty years. And, and I think his point was some houses that had happened, uh, examples on North Hampton Street where all of a sudden the entire front yard was parking. Um, although it does, I think it certain times doesn't allow for where it makes sense to have a, a type of loop or a type of driveway within certain residential, and that's why the special permit process is there. But DPW knows this, the building department knows this, but why are we constantly reminding them that they have to enforce the laws the way they are, not the way they want them to be?
So motion is to receive and send to DPW with building department, copy two, or just want it?
So they're fully aware of this. I have copied them the law.
Yep.
So because I couldn't get anywhere with them, I've asked legal to send a letter to the owner to cause them to comply.
All right, so motion is send to legal to send the letter. So receive, adopt.
Right, I've already filed the order. Now I filed this order to get a copy of it.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to legal department with a copy to DPW and the building department. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, I have a question, sorry. So the way that I'm reading this order, it says that the legal department provide a copy of the letter that was sent to the owner.
Right, because I filed a prior order to ask legal to send a letter to the owner to cause them to comply.
Okay, so then?
So, and we haven't seen them apply, so I'm just.
You just wanna make sure that the letter was sent.
I wanna make sure they've been noticed.
Correct.
That's all.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven from councillor Bacon, that a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit be posted on Evergreen Bay Road and Middlebrook to allow, uh, DPW, so it's gonna go to ordinance, isn't this one?
Yes, receive and.
So this one goes to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-eight, the city council establish a school building, uh, study committee to review options and recommendation steps for improvement within our city budget. Membership should include the following people. Where you want this one to go to?
But not be limited to, to ordinance, please?
Through ordinance, thirty-eight to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, could we suspend the rules, take thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty? Put them in a package, send them to DGR, please. And a bridge reading.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-nine, uh, all going to DG and R, order that, oh, you said DG and R, correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, order that, uh, in accordance to the Mass General, Chapter forty, uh, Section four A, the city council approve the agreements between the Springfield Water and Sewer, uh, forty, is that the annual council, uh, vote to accept the ten thousand for the purchase of forty-seven Chavon Street. Forty-one, that, uh, school declares seven twelve to seven sixteen Dwight Street is surplus. Forty-two, order that one twenty-three Pine Street license, order that in accordance with Mass, uh, Section two-three-six-three C, uh, city council approve the license to enter with the Valley Opportunity Council. Forty-eight is that, uh, Hoyok Procurement Office vote to accept the offer of one dollar for, uh, Western Mass Demo Corp. for two-two-nine Beach Street. And forty-nine is another one for one dollar for two Saint James Street. Fifty is another one with regards to, to Vernon Street. All to DG and R, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So it would go to forty-three now.
Ordinance, please.
Motion, uh, order from councillor Bartley that the handicap sign be placed, so that's the ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-four from councillor Bartley, uh, that the city assessor send a communication to city council for its first meeting in December two thousand.
Yeah, receive, adopt, refer to the assessor, please.
Motion is receive, adopt, refer to the assessor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And receive, adopt, refer to the city auditor, please, for forty-five?
Second.
Forty-five from councillor Bartley, that the city auditor provide an update to the city council for free cash. Motion receive, adopt, send to the auditor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six.
Oh, yes.
That the city, from councillor Bartley, that the city engineer provide recommendation for temporary parking in front of United Bank, eighteen-thirty, North Hampton Street.
Yeah, I, councillor Anderson Bergos, I, I'd like to, your permission, I didn't have a chance to get ahold of you, I'd like to permission to add your name to this one because I believe I filed this, Mr. President, but I can't prove it.
No, we, I think, I thought we did.
I, I thought we did, but I can't find it in my computer, so, so it doesn't matter. So we're re-filing it because it's not the end of the world and we're just gonna, with, Anderson Bergos should be on top, on.
Adding councillor Anderson Bergos.
If they're with me, because that's Ward Six. And refer to ordinance, please.
Motion is refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Forty-seven, uh, from councillor Bartley, uh, DPW pay.
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have any late files? Our, what?
No.
What?
I know it.
All right, so motion is to adjourn, all those in favor?
Second.